Good evening and welcome to the 14th meeting of fiscal year 2021 for the Milton Planning Board. My name is April Anderson. I'm the Chair of the Board and we'll introduce ourselves. Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Tagheas, member.
Denny?
Denny Swenson, member.
Oh, Cheryl.
Okay, and our staff, Julia? She's muted. We have Julia Getman, who's our clerk. Oh, go ahead, Julia, sorry. She might have audio issues. And Allison, would you like to introduce yourself?
Allison Quinn, Assistant Town Planner.
Great. Our Town Planner, Tim Zerwinski, will be joining us. He's a family commitment, but he will be tuning in as soon as he is able. And I think we're expecting Rich Beeler, who's our other, our fifth member. But we're going to get started and call this meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is hosted on the Zoom platform in acknowledgement of the coronavirus and the Governor's orders to not meet in person, as is necessary to keep everybody healthy and safe. If you are interested in tuning in, the Milton Access TV is broadcasting the meeting live and the information on the Zoom webinar is located on the agenda. So, we have, under administrative items, we have two meeting dates coming up, March 11th and March 25th. I assume those work for everybody? On the board? Yes, okay.
Yes.
We have four sets of minutes to approve tonight. They are from January 14th, 2021, January 21st, 2021, January 28th, 2021, and February 11th, 2021. And I will turn it over to our Secretary, Denise Swenson. Are you?
Thank you. Yes, I am ready. Thank you. I am ready to approve the meeting minutes for January 14th, 21st, and February 11th. I don't see any amendments, so I'm just ready to move those forward.
Okay. And did you see the 28th?
Yeah, on January 28th, I had a tiny, tiny amendment, which I think everyone will recall. I just wanted to add a phrase at the beginning of the public comments section about condo development. It had, it had read, "The Board believes that condos zoning discussion should be kept on the agenda." I think others might recall, I had wanted to hit pause, but the rest of the Board wanted to put it on the agenda. So I just added that simple, oops, how do you get there? Just that simple phrase. So I'm assuming that January 28th, 2021, as amended.
Can you read the change, Denny?
Sure. Denise Swenson wanted to hit pause, but the rest of the Board believe that condos zoning discussion should be kept on the agenda.
That was me.
Why would me? I would move to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Tagheas? I just got a note from-
I'd have to turn my video off for that.
I just got a note from Rich Beeler that he'll be about 10, 10 more minutes, so he'll be joining us. Allison, do you have a staff update to offer?
I am not sure what Tim had prepared, but I'm happy to tell you that we've been looking, and you know this, April, because you've been helping, at submitting a grant to the state for what's called, it's kind of like a one-stop, I'm gonna say the wrong thing. It's like a community one-stop grant where you take kind of like your big-ticket items that you've been looking to push forward. You submit one grant and it gives you the opportunity to kind of list up to five different areas that you want to access or tap into some kind of state resources. So we've been, we've been working on that. I'm also planning on submitting an application for dredging for the Napa City River at Milton Landing. We've had some very early conversations with the city of Boston, and I'm going to hunt down the folks in Quincy to see if we can kind of do this regionally.
Great. Any questions?
Now, I add to staff update that, that Tim, our planner, and I both attended the Mass Municipal Lawyers Session yesterday on the Housing Choice Bill. It was very interesting. There was over 200 people on that, on that Zoom call. It was amazing.
Great.
I thought it was, was really good, Kathleen. I still am confused about whether or not we can submit something at town meeting in an article that is both two-thirds or a simple majority.
Yeah, we went through that yesterday afterwards. And so I'm gonna actually, I've already made a note to send it along to Margaret Haley, but I think the answer is yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you.
But is it two-thirds? It's not, you know, so the example, everybody asked questions the other, yesterday about accessory dwelling units is hot. It was on practically everybody's town meeting warrant. And so the question was, if you allowed it as of, you allowed accessory structures as of right, which is a majority vote, could you then include that in a vote that says if it's in the House, you have to have a special permit? So you were combining two things? So there was concern about whether or not you could do that. But the census seemed to be, yes, we could, but it's a two-thirds vote. It's not a majority vote.
Interesting.
So ours, if, if we went ahead with ours, it would be a two-thirds vote.
Mm-hmm.
If we just did, yes, you could do accessory structures in the backyard, that would be a majority vote. That's the only thing we did.
Okay. I just have a quick staff update. I noticed in the Milton Times, well, actually, we've been talking quite a bit about the Historic Commission pursuing a study committee to look at historic districts, creating a historic district, and whether or not that makes sense for Milton, and where and how. And two meetings ago, we had a discussion about how the Planning Board could become involved with that. And I had followed up with the Historical Commission and spoken with Steve O'Donnell, and he reminded me that we already had voiced our support for the Historical Commission to undertake an endeavor, and we communicated that with the Selectmen or the Select Board. And then I had followed up with Melinda Collins, who had been working with the Historical Commission to do that. And I read in the Milton Times today that the, the Select Board has taken the next step, which is to reach out to some organizations for members to be appointed to the Commission. So that process is underway. Hopefully, we'll hear more about that soon. But I just want to make sure that everyone knows that it was pursued and it, our Board's support for that endeavor has been well noted. So now I think we will open it up to citizen speak. We have two public hearings, ADIAT Warf Special Permit Amendment and accessory unit or dwelling unit zoning by law. So if you have anything else you would like to bring to our attention, this would be the time to do so. So if you would like to speak at citizen speak, please raise your hand and we will call on you. I see Rich is here. Let me see. Come up to panelist. Okay. I don't see any hands raised. Hi, Rich.
Hello. For what it's worth, I don't know if I did something wrong, but I had to go in through my calendar invite, the one on the, the one online didn't work for me. Said it expired. It was a different code.
I typically just diet, go in through zoom.com and type in the meeting ID and passcode, and mine worked fine from the agenda, but-
Oh, really? That, that's what I tried. It didn't work, but I can look again, see what happens.
Hopefully, no one else is having any troubles. Okay, I don't see anyone here for citizen speak, so why don't we do this? We're going to open the public hearing for ADIAT Warf Permit Amendment. We are also going to open the accessory dwelling unit hearing, but put it on pause until ADIAT Warf is complete. So we're going to take up ADIAT Warf first. And I believe Allison is prepared to introduce us to this request. Is that correct, Allison? Allison, you're muted.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So I am prepared to, to update you on this. So background on this is on November 4th of 2020, the applicant ADIAT Warf Hospitality LLC presented an application for a common victualer license and an application for an amended alcoholic beverage license to the Milton Select Board. At that time, the Select Board approved the applications and informed the applicant that the applicant should pursue an amendment to the special permit application at the Planning Board to be consistent with their requested seating capacity, hours of operation, and to request relief from a parking requirement. So on January 20th, 2021, the applicant ADIAT Warf Hospitality LLC, represented by Brian O'Donnell, submitted an application for an amendment to the special permit for relief from the seating capacity, takeout sales, and hours of operation from the First Amendment to the special permit approved February 28th of 2008, and relief from one parking requirement from the Third Amendment to the special permit approved March 24th, 2011. So I reviewed the original special permits and went through all the documentation. And the original, I think the way that this was permitted, the, the building was permitted with the intent to have a first-floor commercial space, and then the restaurant came subsequently to the, the housing. So it made sense that some of these details and conditions were in the original special permit. But they're all, everything but for the parking is actually covered within the liquor license and the common victualer. So it makes sense to maybe think about striking that language from the special permit. So my recommendation is that the Milton Planning Board vote to approve the application for an amendment to the special permit to strike the requirement in the February 28th, 2008 special permit. A maximum of 97 seats in the building, inclusive of 12 seats at the bar, 40 additional seats on the adjoining terrace. Additionally, to vote to approve the application for an amendment to special permit to strike the requirement in the February 28th, 2008 special permit, takeout sales exclusive of sales to residents of ADIAT Warf shall not be encouraged and shall not exceed 3% of total sales. To vote to approve the application for amendment to the special permit to strike the requirement in the February 28th, 2008 special permit, hours of operation shall be between 5:00 PM and 11:00 PM daily. And additionally, on Sundays between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM for brunch. Lunch on another day shall not be served. Vote to amend the special permit requirement in the March 24th, 2011 special permit. The restaurant operator shall enter into an agreement with the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority for lease of 10 parking spaces on Friday and Saturday evenings. It is also recommended that the Milton Planning Board vote to amend the special permit to include the language. The terms and conditions of the special permit are to be consistent with the approved common victualer license and liquor license, but for those terms and conditions specifically requiring an approval by the Planning Board. And Cheryl was kind enough to share with us some of the outcomes that Beta had of the Milton Village Parking and Traffic Survey. They seem to be really consistent with the regional understanding of underutilized commercial parking. The applicant has informed us that the former tenant of that commercial space did not have an existing lease with the MBTA, and it hasn't caused any problems. On top of that, kind of with the advent of the ride shares, it seems like that's the, I'm not gonna lie, I do use Uber to, to go down and get some dinner from time to time. It, it does seem like that might be something that at the time seemed like a necessary step to make sure that there was ample parking, but is not, it is no longer needed.
Okay. Is there a representation for the applicant here with us tonight?
I am not sure. Oh, Brian's on. He's got his, Tim and Brian have their, all right, there's a lot of people with their hands raised.
Okay. So, oh, we gotta-
I think we had to pull Tim up to a panel.
Yep. Hi, Tim.
Again.
Hey, Tim.
Hi, Tim.
Okay, so I see two people with their hands raised. Are these the applicant by any chance?
Brian O'Donnell is the applicant, yes.
And I think the operator is the second person. Yaro Dominguez?
Brian, you've been promoted to panelist. Hello. Welcome. You are muted. And do you have somebody with you tonight?
Hi, Yaro Dominguez is the operator for the restaurant, so he's also on.
You just got promoted by somebody else. Okay. We turn it over to you. Would you like to share some thoughts with us or your plans?
Sure. I mean, what we just talked about, you know, the, the, the one thing that wasn't mentioned was the patio service. Right now, it's currently restricted, and we were looking to have that be a weather committee due to the current pandemic. But everything else on the, that was just spoken about, the takeout service, the seating additionally at the bar. The residents, I live in the building, I live in ADIAT Warf, and we did a focus study, a marketing focus study, and, and that was a major thing that the, the residents brought up, that they wanted to be able to sit at the bar. And currently, with the existing restaurant, there was only 12 seats. So we, we, we added the 12 seats to the restaurant. We were building out a beautiful restaurant. We are doing a, a, a pretty big design for the, for the patio. And the parking situation, I spoke to the, the landlord, and she said that the MBTA lease was never, they never, they never used it. I actually called the, the MBTA and emailed them on February 4th to try to get some information on, on the lease that was active, and I couldn't get any information back from them. Currently, right now, including the spots in front of Milton Village, there's, there's 111 spots that are public parking and, and exclusive use to the restaurant. And with ride share right now, I, I think that that is, I believe for the restaurant use, I have two restaurants up the street. I think that's a great amount of parking and shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Anyone on the Board have any questions before we go to public comment?
Do you have a question, April?
Yes, go right there.
How many parking spaces are exclusive use for the restaurant?
15.
15?
Correct.
And where are those, where are the 15 located?
The upper, right outside the front entry of the restaurant.
And for Uber or other delivery, is it just a pulling up in front? There's no short-term parking required for that?
No, I mean, there's a big circular area for them to pull up and turn around. Two cars can actually pass in the driveway. I mean, two cars can pass through all the way around. So right now, when food delivery comes to the building, to the 72 units that are in the building, they, they usually park right in the driveway.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So, Tim, or Allison, did we receive any correspondence either in support or request?
We received a ton of correspondence. It's in the comments folder in the OneDrive. Almost, I, I don't think we got one oppositional comment letter. So everyone, everyone that chimed in is very supportive of the project.
There's about 25 letters in here.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Actually, I have another question.
Okay.
April, I'm sorry, I have another question.
Go ahead.
In looking at the special permits, it was, there's reference to valet service, and I'm wondering, I don't have it open in front of me. Was that a condition of the special permit? And was that condition removed in one of the amendments? Or is that something that needs to be addressed here as well?
I'm not sure, Cheryl. The, the request that we got was specifically speaking to the MBTA requirement. I hadn't really thought about-
Yeah, I, I understand that there's not a valet service, or there hasn't been when the prior restaurant was there. I, I don't know if there's an intention to have valet, but where it's, if it's still a standing condition in the special permit?
I am not aware that there's a, a condition of the special permit as a requirement of valet. I do know that at one point when the restaurant opened, they did have valet service on the weekends when it was, was busier. But living in the building, they haven't had valet in several years.
I'm looking through the permit now. I don't see anything about valet, but maybe Allison and Tim can skim through it while we're taking public comment, see if that pops up. Denny?
Yes, I was wondering, I, I read a lot of letters from the community, the broader community. They, you seem to have a lot of fans. I think my understanding is that people in ADIAT Warf are interested in having a quality restaurant, and the people in the town of Milton are interested too. Is this a situation where the restaurant needs a certain amount of, you know, outside residents, outside of ADIAT Warf in order to survive or thrive? I'm sure you want to thrive. I was just wondering, how many, how many people do you envision, you know, or how many do you need to come to the restaurant?
You know, there's 72 units in the building, and I think that that is going to be a majority of the business. But obviously, we'd like neighborhood traffic to be able to walk here and enjoy the, the riverfront and enjoy the restaurant, you know, or, or occasionally drive here if they have to. The, the business model, it's a small restaurant. It, it, it's going to survive off of the building.
And I, I was wondering, I read through all of the letters and they, and they were positive. I didn't see any residents of ADIAT Warf, and I didn't know if you had spoken to the condo committee. And then I'm also interested to hear from residents who are right above the restaurant or above the patio area. They might have interest in the change in hours.
The, there was no change in hours to the, to the patio, to the exterior.
Okay.
Consistent with what it was before. The Board are, is aware of these of the amendment, application, they're well aware of it, and they emailed me back that they were going to call in.
Okay. Well, good. Well, I would, I'm interested to hear from them.
Okay.
And then I'm, I'm wondering about, I know there's a doctor's office that uses the parking during the day, and it seems as though the lunch hours have been created. So I was just checking in to see about the impact on that doctor's office. I don't know if he's one of the people that wrote the letter, or if you've had any communication.
No, no communication with the doctor's office. And as far as lunch hours, our plan is not to open up for lunch, only on, on Friday. I mean, Saturday and Sunday for, for brunch.
Oh, okay. Because I see 11:00 AM. I, I had assumed that was lunch, but that's-
Our, our plan is to, to not open for lunch and to, to open at 4:00 for, for dinner during the week.
Oh, okay. But you're just, the, the hours are 11:00 AM, so your staff can set up?
Sure.
You're, you're set to take clean, set up?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so no lunch, except for on Saturday and Sunday?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, I am interested to hear from the ADIAT Warf residents.
Great. And Kathleen?
I noticed in the special permits that the first page of the special permit mentions that valet parking shall be available on Fridays and Saturdays where customers are anticipated to exceed 50% of capacity. So we should be taking that out as well, if we're not providing valet parking.
Yeah, that was my question.
I don't see that. How am I missing that?
I think there's-
A couple of versions. There's been several amendments to the original special permit. So it, it may have been taken out previous to the February 28th one. I'm, I'm not certain.
This is, yeah, this is January 30th, 2008?
Yeah, the, the later, the later amendments, which kind of obviously were, were voted upon after the restaurant was in operation, actually acknowledged that there was seven-day-a-week valet service, kind of above and beyond the requirements of the special permit. But I think all of that is kind of in service to, I, I think to the point that Cheryl was, was, was making earlier of, you know, the availability of parking and kind of the, the awareness.
Um, and I, I was wondering, I read through all of the letters and they, and they were positive, um. I didn't see any residents of eighty-eight wharf and I didn't know if you had spoken to the condo committee. Um, and then I'm also interested to hear from residents who are right above the restaurant or above the patio area. Um, they might have interest in the change in hours.
The, um. There was no change in hours to the, uh, to the patio, to the exterior.
Okay.
Consistent with what it was before, um, the board, uh, are, is aware of these, um. Of the amendment, application, they're well aware of it and they emailed me back that they were going to call in.
Okay, well, good, well, I would, I'm interested to hear from them.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, I'm wondering about, um. I know there's a doctor's office that uses the parking during the day and it seems as though the lunch hours have been created. So I was just checking in to see about the impact on that doctor's office, I don't know if he's one of the people that wrote the letter. Um, or if you've had any communication.
Uh, no, no communication with the doctor's office and as far as lunch hours, our, our plan is not to open up for lunch, only on, on Friday, I mean, uh, Saturday and Sunday for, for brunch.
Oh, okay. Cause I see eleven AM, I, I had assumed that was lunch, but that's.
Our, our plan is to, to not open for lunch and to, to open at four o'clock for, for dinner during the week.
Oh, okay, but you're just, the, the hours are eleven AM, so your staff can set up.
Sure.
You're, you're set to take clean setup, okay. Okay, so, so no lunch, except for on Saturday and Sunday?
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right, well, I am interested to hear from the eighty-eight wharf residents.
Great, and Kathleen?
Um, I noticed in the special permits that, um. The first page of the, uh, special permit mentions that valet parking. Shall be available on Fridays and Saturdays where customers are anticipated to exceed fifty percent of capacity. So we should be taking that out as well, if we're not providing. Valley parking.
Yeah, that was my question.
See that, how am I missing that? I think there's.
A couple of versions. There, there's been several amendments to the original special permit. So it, it may have been taken out previous to the February twenty-eighth one, I'm, I'm not certain, but.
Yeah, this is January thirtieth, two thousand and eight.
Yeah, the, the later, the later amendments, um, which kind of obviously were, were. Voted upon after the, the restaurant was in operation, actually acknowledged that there was, um, seven-day-a-week valet service. Um, kind of above and beyond the requirements of the special permit, um, but I think all of that is kind of in service to, um. I, I, I think to the point that Cheryl was, was, was making earlier of, you know, the availability of parking and kind of the, um. The awareness.
I'm not saying that they should have it, Tim, I was just saying that if it's in the special permit, we should be taking it out.
Okay, I, I just, I just, I just read all of them, like April asked me to, so I just wanted to relay back.
Thank you.
What I learned.
I was reading the original, or maybe it wasn't the original, the two thousand and two permit and it didn't have valet in it, but anyways, let's, um, now hear from the public. If you would like to speak on this, please raise your hand.
Um, well, people are getting ready, could I ask Tim or Allison a question? Um, I, I did look over some of the older version, um, he's saying that there aren't, uh, changes in time. But I, I thought at one point they, they closed at ten and at another point they closed at eleven. Now, on some days we're closing at midnight. Do you know what the, what the most recent version hours of operation were? And is, and is it, they're, they're closing at midnight or are they like, closing their doors, but then they're still putting equipment away and, you know?
For Sunday, eleven PM.
Okay, Sunday, eleven PM, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, midnight?
Correct.
And is that a change?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I, 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 I don't, well, I mean, this is obviously up to the board, um, and I don't know if I, and I, I apologize for being late, um, my little guy, um, is having a tough day. Um, I, I, I don't know if Allison went over this in her kind of introductory remarks, I think the goal here is to, um. Clean up the special permit in a way that puts the things that the select board regulates into the select board's jurisdiction. And, you know, amend the things that are kind of necessary to the physical site plan, um, that, that's, that the planning board kind of governs. And so, um, you know, I, I, I think, Denny, you know, to have an understanding of kind of what we're doing, I think it's important to look and see kind of what the changes are, but I, I think. The goal here is to, you know, take governing the hours of the actual facility, you know, out of the planning board's kind of plate. As it were.
Um, they were already approved by the select board for their, for their hours, it was a condition of the common victualer and liquor license.
And, and, uh, in addition to that, the attorney for the board. For eighty-eight wharf called in and stated that he had the support of the residents and he, he is the one who also approved the, uh, the, the hours.
Okay, okay.
At that hearing.
Okay, so we're just about parking, is that right, Tim?
Yeah, I, I, I mean.
I think Tim's making the case that these other items had already been discussed at a select board meeting and they have jurisdiction over that. We also have it in our permit and I think what Tim and Allison are recommending to us is that we both have those things in our permit because it creates.
We've lined it up with what the.
Between the two boards, um, so anytime the select board makes a change to their liquor license, we would then have to change our special permit to mirror that, which doesn't really seem to. Add any value, um, so I think Tim's recommending that we take those things out and we focus. Physical structure in the remaining item that's been requested is this parking issue. I find it super interesting that the parking requirement or the lease of parking spots with the MBTA has never actually been executed. So.
Can't imagine the MBTA giving you a lease, I mean, I.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know how we.
Imagine somebody asking for it, again.
I don't know how the town can force a private party to enter into a lease with a different third party. Juncture for a restaurant that already exists, perhaps if it's new construction or something. Um, but I don't see any hands raised with the public, I do want to give folks some more time, but I do see Cheryl has raised her hand, so why don't you go ahead, Cheryl?
Um, yes. Um, this one where the parking is in this special permit, often times parking for restaurants is covered by the Board of Appeal, is that correct? And for example, steel and rye, was that?
Um, so in, in, in the sense.
Board of Appeal for quantity.
Well, um, steel and rye, perhaps, I, I think in, 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 in the sense that this was, um, a PUD that was. Yeah, the, the, the special permit, I mean, the special permit issued by the planning board governs all of the things that are in the PUD zoning, um, parking, I, I assume being one of them. I haven't read that PUD zoning in quite some time, um, but if it were, you know, again, you know, if there were either like an allowed use under the underlying zoning or, you know, a variance, um. Yeah, that would be something, you know, for the Board of Appeals, but, um, I, I, I think in this case, it's, um, it, it is the planning board because it's a special permit by the planning board that, um.
And we double-checked, I double-checked with Joe Prandak to, to verify that it was a planning board related relief requirement.
Because one thing I'll mention, when the. The master plan implementation committee was doing the zoning analysis work that led to the Milton Village overlay district that we put forward in a town meeting adopt. The, um, there was, there were, uh, comments from the public about steel and rye and the parking from steel and rye. Um. Being occupied basically pretty much all the way down, uh, Elliot Street towards Milton Village. Um, that most of those spaces, including the service spaces, um. Uh, were utilized and, um, the parking, um, analysis that was done by Beta. Did suggest that the service zone parking, um. Requirements and needs be analyzed further, and the reason I bring this up is that, um. Steel and rye and a restaurant, a successful restaurant and at eighty-eight wharf may not have, um, overlap. But there, there will be, um, you know, increasing demand eventually when things. Um, allow people to gather again with full capacity. And we will need to continue to evaluate the availability of, um, public parking, I think, uh, in the district. And, um, so I, I'd like, uh, for, for us to bear that in mind because here, I think at steel and rye also, there's a very limited number of exclusive parking spaces on site and, um, the same is here. The special permit had required, I think it was thirty-five parking spaces and, uh, there's, uh, fifteen available. And if, if you said that fifteen spaces might. Yield, uh, let's say it's a, a party of four, you know, um, there would still be quite a reliance on people getting there by other means. And I appreciate that and want for us to, uh, to have thriving businesses, but we also have to be mindful of. How many people do drive in Milton to get to their amenity spaces, so it's just something, as we look at future development in Milton Village. Um, we, we may be, uh, limiting what future availability is available in our public parking spaces.
Okay, we have a member of the public with their hand raised, Norman Nowinski. Um, I will ask you to unmute yourself and please share your name and address and go ahead.
I'm Norman Nowinski, I'm on the Board of Trustees over in Milton Landy, eighty-eight Wharf Street. Uh, I've been a resident for, uh, eight years there and I'm now serving on the board. The, the board does fully support Mr. O'Donnell and his partner in this endeavor. There's a, a need for the quality restaurant of this nature in the community and the building. Uh, we have never had a problem there with parking. Uh, the fifteen spots that you're referring to are right in front of the building and on the side of the building. You also got public parking lot coming down the hill on Wharf Street and public parking on, uh, Adam Street. So I don't think parking really is an issue there, the other thing is this, uh. You all know we're in the pandemic and for Mr. O'Donnell to take on this endeavor, he's got to be commended. Uh, I'm a bankruptcy attorney, I can't tell you how many restaurants I've done over the years. And even in good times, it's a difficult business. So what I'm asking the board to, let's ease up the restrictions to give them an opportunity to succeed. Uh, one of the things I don't think has been brought up yet is the percentage of liquor sales to food sales. That's in the permit as well, I thought that was going to be discussed today as well. Um, that I urge you to eliminate. Uh, at the planning board meeting, uh, Chief Wells said, there's no problem. So why create a restriction that doesn't have a problem? Uh, if he sells forty-one percent liquor as opposed to food, you could pull his permit. And that's not fair. Uh, and today, you know, more people are doing takeout, so the percentage of takeout is going to be higher, the percentage of liquor sales is going to be higher. So I, I ask you all to reconsider that as well.
Thank you very much. Okay.
I'm in a hard time imagining why we would have put that into the special permit to begin with.
The limitation on liquor sales, I'm sure that was a sensitivity to people being, um, concerned about this turning into a full-service bar with no food.
Right.
These days, yeah.
Oh, we're in different, we're in different times, but remember when these restaurants go in, there's a lot of concessions from neighborhoods, things like that, so. It, it does make sense, but I, I, I do agree.
Okay, so, um. Last call for public comment here. I see none. Just, oh, I see one more person, um, Anne Julie.
Hi, um, I've been a resident here since two thousand and four, when the building opened. And, uh, totally love having a restaurant down there. Um, I know early on that the patio closed. Or last call at the patio was always a little bit earlier than last call at the in, interior of the restaurant. So that in the summer, the folks who lived over the restaurant and had their windows open and whatnot. Uh, might not have a little piece, so, um. Again, I'm ta, I'm thrilled, thrilled that Brian has come in in here with a restaurant. But I do want to hear the particulars of the patio, uh, hours this summer.
I think that the patio hours will remain the same as they always have. Is that correct, Brian and Allison and Tim?
And, and what are they? Because I read they were eleven o'clock.
No, last evening at eight-thirty.
Oh, okay.
And then everyone off the patio by, uh, ten o'clock.
Okay, so same old, same old, Brian.
Correct.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay, perfect, all right, and have you folks figured out? That, um, thing that you were talking about a couple of months ago, which was about the ratio of the sale. Value of the liquor to the sales value of the meals. And Brian did a really good job of, of explaining that, uh, now people are ordering fancy cocktails. Which can be almost, you know, equal to your entree, so has that, has that issue been resolved?
Um, I don't believe that's one of the requests before us tonight, Tim and Allison.
Okay, okay, I know it came up last, it, it came up before, okay. Okay, well, if we can go down there and have a lovely meal and drink and not make too much noise for the upstairs neighbors after ten o'clock. Kathleen's laughing because she knows it, we'll be thrilled, thank you.
And spend a lot of, a lot of money on the wine.
Right, we're gonna have.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, Anne.
Hey. Anyone else for comment on the eighty-eight wharf application? Okay, so, um, why don't we go right ahead and close the public hearing and then we can deliberate as a board? Um, let's, will anybody make a motion to close the public hearing on the eighty-eight wharf special permit amendment?
I will.
Some move.
And somebody want a second?
A second.
Okay, so Cheryl and Kathleen, Julia, in case you didn't hear that, um, okay, we need to do a roll call vote, Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yeah.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes, okay, now we're going to talk about the request, um, who would like to start? Anybody have?
So I'm looking at the, um, the memo from, um, the, the license that was issued by the Board of Select, the Select Board. Um, on November fourth. And that, um, does talk about the hours of operation, if the patio seating is allowed, the last service of food is eight-thirty. And everybody has to be off the patio by ten, so that sort of conforms to what, uh, our understanding, what, um, Brian's understanding was. Um, I haven't seen in the, um, special permit, the language on the percentage of value of food to liquor. Um, but I think we should address that as well, I don't think that's something that we should have in our special permit. Um, that's.
I didn't see that in the special permit, Kathleen?
I'm not seeing it in the, I'm not seeing it in, uh, any of the drafts that I'm looking at.
Um. It could, it could be in the original liquor license, um, but I, I think we're all.
Well, if it's in the liquor license, that's different, um, it, it's, it's whether or not it's in the special permit. Because then I would want to say that on the proposed recommendations that you had, um, presented to us. That I would want to add in something that addressed that if we had it in the special permit.
That's why Kathleen and I tried to use that, uh, umbrella of, you know, making the recommendation. That you guys vote to amend the special permit. Um, that, that the terms and conditions of the special permit are to be consistent with the approved. Common victualer license and liquor license, but for those terms and conditions specifically requiring approval by the planning board.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay. Rich, Denny, Cheryl, comments, thoughts?
Um, I, I'm just checking if I'm reading this right, so there's ninety-seven seats for the inside capacity. Forty additional seats on the terrace and they have fifteen spaces exclusive to the restaurant. Is my math correct? That's what I'm reading in this, in this, um, letter to Tim Chilinsky.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so where we have. One hundred and thirty-three seats and fifteen parking spaces.
That are dedicated.
Fifteen that are dedicated, that's right, and then there's public parking spaces. I'm just, I'm just trying, trying to wrap my head around that, I know that the, the residents of three thirty-three, I'm sorry, of, of eighty-eight. Wharf will be, will be their primary residence, but we did see twenty-five letters from across the town of people that are so excited. That I think it's a popular restaurant, I think these guys have run popular restaurants nearby, which is a wonderful thing. Um. I'm just really concerned about the parking, I, I understand there's. I agree, there's probably a lot of parking near there. I just don't know, I'm interested to hear what the other board members think about that, I, I think if, if we do this, we could be giving away. Uh, you know, a lot of the public parking in the area, I think Cheryl made a good point that, that we have, um. You know, other things coming. Um, so. I, I know people talk about ride share a lot, I know during COVID, a lot of young people who were using ride share ended up having to buy their own car. Because they stopped taking, um, public transportation during COVID, so are they gonna give up their car and go back to ride share? I don't know, I think these are things we're going to find out in the next couple of years, um. I, I am concerned because I saw what happened in East Milton, um. Where we didn't have designated spots for various establishments. And it, it runs into problems later and it's very difficult because if you have a successful business, nobody wants to say. You know, we don't want to tell you to shut down, I'm just trying to think, is there any, anything we could do to help them find more parking somewhere or. Come up with some solutions?
So, uh, Denny, what I would say to that is, um, you know, the, this is what the public parking is there for, for people that are using the business district. Um, and I, I think if it's the planning board's goal, which I think if, if you read the, the Milton Village zoning, um, and, and, and the purpose and, and the commentary around that. Is to build a, a walkable transit-oriented district, um, you absolutely one hundred percent cannot be over-parking any of these projects, existing or otherwise. Um, you know, i- if there's a concern about traffic, if there's a concern about, you know. Too many cars being on the road, congestion, anything. too many cars being on the road, congestion, anything like that, if it's going to be a walkable transit-oriented district, you need to have as few parking spaces as you can possibly manage. And, and I think, you know, when you, when you look at the nature of the business district right now, you know, a lot of that public parking, you know, out on Adam Street, on Wharf Street, in the lot that's in the Wharf area park, in the Yacht Club area, you know, there's, there's daytime businesses and there's nighttime businesses. So, you know, I think when you look at, you know, the, the public parking versus the dedicated parking, you need to look and really, you know, evaluate if, if the post office and the hardware store and the bank are closed, those spaces should be available. Now, you know, what I will say is that, you know, if you are going to depend on public parking, which, which I think is, is probably fine in this case, that there does need to be an enforcement mechanism there, which I think, you know, we struggle with in our business districts. You know, but, but I think the consequence of over-parking these projects and requiring, you know, more parking just in case someone drives their car, really undermines the ability of this district to be, you know, the walkable transit-oriented downtown kind of suburban village that I think, at least I assume the planning board is trying to make it.
So the question of park.
I think it's a larger.
Um, well, in relation to this request, I mean, the parking issue is, do they need to keep the requirement in there to lease another 10 spots to the MBTA? Which, to date, doesn't seem.
I can't even see why you can, how you can require somebody to do something that the MBTA is gonna do.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is we can leave that in, in the permit, and that doesn't really change the existing condition because the MBTA isn't returning phone calls, and this agreement has never been issued, so, or executed. So I guess the question is, do we want to just keep it in there and allow another tenant to violate the provision because they can't? You know, either we don't allow them to open a restaurant in an existing restaurant space because they can't meet that provision, or we take it out, or we just look the other way, which appears to be what we've been doing with every other restaurant that's been in that space. So I understand the comments about parking. I tend to agree with Tim. I mean, 111 spots for a restaurant. Granted, they're not all dedicated, but for a restaurant of this size is far more than enough than they'll ever need on their busiest night. But our question really isn't about that. Our question before us is about the 10 spots leased from the MBTA.
Again.
In the conversation a little for everybody's benefit.
Again, can I jump in?
Sorry, yeah.
No, sorry, I just didn't want to jump over anybody. Yeah, I know, a couple of comments. So I'll start with here. But I'm gonna obviously go, I'm gonna go in another direction afterwards. So, I mean, I agree, I'll start with you, Tim. Tim, I agree with everything you said. Although, the one thing I, I, I want to mention on, on the walkable, you said it way better than I, but the walkable transit-oriented neighborhood, I mean, that's gonna, that's where we want to get to, but that's a, that's, that's like a, you've got to make in, we've got to do things to get there, I know, but it's also, you gotta be careful, right? Because the reality is, people don't walk to these neighborhoods, they drive. And so we've got to also think of that. However, my feeling about this specific property, if it was only 15 spots, and that's where we've had issue in other parts of town that has restaurants, well, there is just no parking. And so you've got to cobble together some proper spots. And so folks will think, hey, well, if we, maybe if we get 10 over here and 10 down the street and 15 over here, now we've got enough. And to be honest with you, that doesn't work. The reality for this spot, though, for me, is that there is parking there. And I do agree with what Tim said about nighttime, right? So at nighttime, it's different. Things are closed, and those spaces then open up. And so, and the other reality for me is the fact that, and while I'm sure there's other folks out there that haven't said anything, we're hearing some overwhelming positive response for this, and it sounds like the community wants it. I mean, I would probably be one of the first to say if, if some of the butters and folks were really concerned about it. I don't live in that neighborhood, so I don't know what it's like. I do know if you drive through at night, there's less cars than there in the morning or daytime, you know, absent COVID. I haven't been driving over there lately. So, I mean, for me, I'm not so concerned about the parking just because there is actually parking there, even though it's not specifically dedicated. If there wasn't that parking, then I would have a different opinion.
Thanks, Rich.
Yep.
Cheryl?
Yeah, I mean, the reason I raised the point about parking and the district overall earlier is that I do think the board has to think about, you know, as the district builds out, if there's a lot of underdeveloped property right now. And I just would like to make sure that there's adequate public parking for potential, you know, this is a business before us now. So that I do think that that's something that is much better for us to acknowledge in something future that may not, or may or may not happen. But I want us to think about it as, as a board and in terms of planning and how to think about district parking and shared parking. And the fact that it is difficult, and East Milton has seen the difficulty when you get things that are more fully built out. And Milton Village is not as that, is not as built out as that for us. You know, it's gonna be cumulative impacts, and what's, why leasing is adequate parking today may become more challenged down the road. And I'm not saying that I don't support this request with, with the MBTA removing that restriction. But I do, I do have a concern about the thinking, as, as Denny said, that there were many people in many parts of Milton who will drive here. I, I do have an ownership of a restaurant in Lower Mills, and we did have to have parking arrangements with other property owners because there was a concern for customers about having a place to park. And CVS and the Meeting House Bank and, and other locations are commonly used for those businesses in Milton Village, or in Lower Mills. So, while I agree that we don't want to overpark it, I do, I do still have some concerns about making sure that there's, that we're not picking one or two businesses that could have a detriment to building out the entire district down the road.
I had my rehearsal dinner at Cheryl's restaurant. It was lovely.
Okay. I guess my two cents is I enthusiastically support the requests. I think it's exceptional that you're willing to invest in this community during such an uncertain time economically. And I have been to every iteration of restaurant at 88 Wharf, and there's been a number of them, and I've enjoyed them all. I live on Elliott Street myself, and this is my side of town, and I think this would be an excellent addition to the village. And just from my personal experience, I can't imagine that there wouldn't be enough parking without the MBTA spots, which we don't have now anyways. Even when you have functions in the building and in the restaurant, I've never had trouble finding a spot. So anyways, I guess we should ask, we should go through these requests, take, somebody in the staff can craft, or Kathleen can craft the motion, but we should probably do these one by one because they're amending different special permits, right? But unless there's anything left to say, I mean, I think we're prepared to vote.
I actually did have a.
Go ahead, Denny, I didn't see you.
Would this be considered a fourth amendment to the original special permit?
Sorry, who is that?
What'd you say, Cheryl?
I'm sorry, would this be considered a fourth amendment to the original special permit?
I don't know.
Yeah. It should be.
Yes, sorry, yes, I've been on mute talking.
That's all right. So how does that work? Does that mean that all of the other special, you have to look through all four amendments and the original to sort of arrive at what the current special permit is?
Yes.
Is there a way to fix that?
Yeah, that's messy. I don't like that. That's challenging for enforcement.
That's what I'm wondering.
You would have to do an amended and restated special permit, and I don't know that Brian wants to wait for us to figure out how to do that. We're not related, just full disclosure. So.
Put Donalds on these calls.
But the way it's done now, Kathleen, is requires, I mean, I read through all of these amendments and the special permit, both at the time that we did the Milton Village work and then recently when Tim posted all of them. And I do think it's confusing, even for those of us, you know, who read these special permits and write these special permits. So whether it's right now, but I would, I would think it would be beneficial to both the applicant and the 88 Wharf residents and for the building department in terms of enforcement to have something that, one document that they could refer to eventually. I mean, I'm not trying to hold this up, but I do, I do think it's, it's a good way to, if we're trying to clean house on this special permit, I don't think we're gonna do it by doing a fourth amendment.
So what I would ask is, why don't we vote on a fourth amendment for the sake of allowing the project to advance? Because from what I understand, they already have site control and are waiting, just, this is the only reason why they keep the permit issued. And then we can ask Tim and Allison to do the administrative work for us to come back and then vote on a replacement permit at a future meeting. Does that make sense?
That's, that's fine with me.
Okay, because I agree with you. And Brian, I hope this makes sense to you. I mean, I think it's in your best interest to have one permit that somebody can read and say, yes, your requirement.
It was, it was rough trying to go through all the different iterations of the permit, trying to sort it out.
Yeah. Okay, so then, Tim, do you understand that? And Allison, that will be your task for after the meeting, after we take a vote. Okay.
Yes.
So can someone, I don't know who.
I'm sorry, April, I'm sorry. Can I just ask a question? Because I, there were a lot of documents. Is, is, is parking something that can be opened up and revisited later down the road when perhaps they're developing new parking areas and so on? Is that something that could be reopened and discussed down the road? For instance, if it's, it's starting to get crazy crowded, but we are asking three or four businesses to come together and create parking when they, as they build a new building and da, 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 because that.
So, so Denny, and actually, I did want to kind of chime in before, before there was a vote. I, I think, and I think this kind of speaks to Rich's point as well. You know, I, I think to the extent that there is still a valet requirement, I know we talked about getting rid of it, but it may make sense to keep it as kind of like that kind of, you know, pressure release valve. You know, understanding that, you know, okay, it, it just, it's the type of thing that keeps open that possibility of, okay, if we need to make arrangements with somebody, we can still, you know, we're still obligated to run a valet service if there's beyond whatever capacity is originally there. You know, because I think, you know, it is, you know, I know I went off on a little rant earlier because I'm passionate about this kind of thing. Denny, I wasn't ganging up on you. I would have done it to Cheryl if she had piped up first. But, but it is, I, I think it is an important point. But, but I think having those sort of flexible programmatic operational solutions, you know, in the form of valet parking and kind of keeping open the possibility of a shared parking agreement, you know, rather than, you know, a prescriptive, you've got a lease from the MBTA or you've got to buy a parking lot somewhere. So I do think, you know, you know, in, in reflection, you know, keeping that valet requirement, again, as that pressure release valve, like, okay, if we don't have enough on site, you know, we can figure something out in that regard, I think may be a good way to go.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I appreciate that. And also, just so you know, there's internal planning jargon of, we can't overpark it. And I'm thinking, wait, we are overparking, like, it's just a different way of communicating. So I, so anyway, I'm catching up to you, but thank you.
That reminds me of when I used to live in Dorchester and Savin Hill, and people would say, do you live over the bridge? And I was like, well, it depends on what side you're on. Yeah. What do you mean? Okay, so who can help us figure out this motion? Allison, do you, I mean, Kathleen, are you comfortable doing this, or should we ask Allison or Tim?
April, can I make a quick comment first?
Oh, yes, please, Rich.
Sorry, just, I'm sorry, I was on mute. I had double mute, I guess. Just something Tim just said, I was thinking about, Tim, I forget the exact words you used, but when you were talking about the valet, keeping it in there as, as, what I, what I heard, I don't know if you said it, but this is what I kind of heard. If you, I started thinking about like the valet, right? So East Milton, some of those restaurants have a requirement for valet. But the reality is, there's no valet, it never was valet, right? And so we keep, like, we're probably putting this requirement in, and I'm wondering if we should.
Abbey Park has a valet.
Navara has a requirement in theirs too, and I've never seen a valet. We actually took the spot away after it was put in. But my point is, instead of putting a requirement for a valet, because I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure that they need it. So I'm not coming down on them. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we don't alter it in the future to, if there becomes some sort of an issue, if parking does get bigger or worse, that maybe you could have that, like, you know, the requirement.
But Rich, it's in the permit already.
Right.
The valet parking.
That's not right. All right, just give me a second. Let me rephrase it then. If the requirement is in there, that they have to have a valet, yes. My point, though, is, I don't think that's a good requirement because nobody's enforcing it. I'm not a fan of putting things in as rules when nobody cares about them. They're pointless rules. My point, though, was, why not alter it to say, if it, if parking, to Denny's point, if parking becomes an issue in the future, then the town can require you to start using the valet requirement. So my point is, let's not say they gotta have it day one, when you know full well you're not gonna make them have it day one. But five years later, when now there's an issue with parking, the town wants to kick it in. I think I was saying it a little differently than you, Tim, because we, almost what I think I was hearing from you is, let's keep it in there just in case, but not use it. But why not just alter it so it's only used when it's needed? Makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, that does make a lot of sense, Rich. I, I guess the, the question becomes, what is, what is the trigger? Like, we'd have to come up with, you know, if, you know, either a timeline or, you know, some type of metric.
Well, you're way better than that than me, so.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not because, you know, I would actually prefer just to not enforce the thing until we have it because I can't, I can't think of, you know, how you would measure that right off the top of my head. But I do appreciate the point of sort of not having, you know, unenforced requirements when we just know that we're not gonna do it. So I mean, that's, you know, it's something to, to, to think about.
Yeah, right now, it just says, so as not to inconvenience the residents of, what's the language? Inconvenience the residents of Wharf Street or the businesses in the Milton Village area. It's pretty vague.
But actually, that gives us a trigger. If, you know, three businesses come forward and they're, they're, you know, they have complaints, then we have a mechanism to resolve it, and we don't have to go back to the drawing board. So.
Use of the 88 Wharf for someone, yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's an interesting point, too. Do you remember when still, when I was permitted, the businesses that needed short-term parking were concerned about having people park in front of their businesses and then leave it, their car should be there for hours. So like, you know, pizza, for example. So I do think as the district evolves, you know, having mechanisms to manage your parking is important. And I'm not sure how that gets addressed in a special permit at this time, but it works so that, you know, one business is not disadvantaged over another, I think will be important down the road.
I just think it's, it's not fair to the business at some point to say, to have something looming over them that nobody knows if it's ever going to be enforced. So I do think at some point, Tim, we should come up with the trigger. Because I'm not a business owner, and I don't know if Brian has thoughts on this, but having, having a rule that nobody enforces but looms over your head, that maybe somebody's gonna enforce one day, but you don't know what the trigger is, sounds unfair to me.
I agree with everything Rich said. The challenge I have right now is, I don't know how we're gonna resolve it tonight, but I'm thinking that perhaps this is something that Tim and Allison can think about in it while they're looking at consolidating all of these amendments into a single document in the future. Does that sound okay, Tim? Rich?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Yeah, I think, and, and, you know, and we can talk about how exactly that'll work from a, you know, procedural standpoint. I mean, if, if Brian kind of agrees that, you know, consolidating those special permits is, is a good idea. You know, it does, I mean, once, once we do this thing, it really, you know, becomes dependent upon the ascent of the applicant. dependent upon the ascent of, of the applicant to, to come back in and do additional amendments. So, but it's, it sounds like, you know, we're talking about things that, you know, everyone kind of is on board with. So we can put some thought into that and, and work together, you know, with, with Brian, kind of, you know, and, and get his thoughts on that. So we can, yeah, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll think about that and figure out when we, when we can come back.
And I, and I appreciate that.
So if we were doing a motion, we would want to move that we want to amend the language of the special permit to state that the terms and conditions of the special permit are to be consistent with the approved common victuals license and alcohol license, but for those terms and conditions specifically requiring an approval by the planning board. And then we would want to move further to strike the requirement to obtain an MBTA parking lease, strike the provisions prohibiting takeout sales and strike the requirement, the limitation of ninety-seven seats in the building, inclusive of twelve seats at the bar. Let me see, what else? And that the hours of operation would be consistent with the language in the, in the victuals license issued by the Board of Select Board. Am I missing anything?
I don't think so. I'm looking at Allison's memo. Allison, does that sound right to you? You're the one who did the legwork on this?
That's, Kathleen's correct. That's, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, so that's a motion. Do we have a second? Cheryl, Rich, Denny? Okay, Cheryl, a second. Okay, now let's do a roll call vote. Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
I'm sorry, could you read it one more time? I think I got it. I just, there were a lot of details.
Denny, if, if you, if you have, if you have Allison's memo open, it's the one, two, three, four items under recommendation. And then there's a kind of, and that, that's on the, that's on the first page. And then there's, there's a fifth item on the second page where it opens, quote, "The terms and conditions of the special permit are to be consistent with the approved common vic license." That's the, all of those items were in Kathleen's motion.
Right. A second. I mean, I, I mean, yes, yes. I'm tired.
Fourteen, perfect.
Yes.
Okay, Cheryl voted yes. Rich, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. I think that covers all of us, right? Yep. Okay, thank you very much. And good luck to you both. We're looking forward to.
Can I add one thing?
Please.
Did this, the special, like, now that the, this will take a few weeks for, for this to get redrafted from the planning board. I was, I was hoping that a support could be told to the, the building department so that we could get a at-risk building permit so that we could try to, we've been at a standstill for, for several weeks and we'd, I'll have no chance to get open this summer if we, if we can't start work.
I can't imagine this is going to take several weeks for us to pull together.
But why couldn't we just vote to send a note to the building inspector that we've approved the, you know.
To vote on that. We just did it. Just convey it.
Okay, that would be real helpful and I'll reach out to the building commissioner and hopefully we can get.
Brian, ultimately, that's, that's the building commissioner's call. So, you know, the, the vote happens. It really now is just a matter of administratively us drawing up a decision and kind of circulating it for signatures, but it, it does, you know, it's going to, it's going to be Joe's call, so.
To the, to the point of the applicant, I mean, I think that this is a very difficult time to be opening a new business, especially in the sector. So they, to the extent that we can expedite this process, I think we should. And all of us have to sign the document, is that correct? Sign the amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Majority, yes.
We'll do our best and if, Tim and Allison, if you need some administrative support, I'm happy to help type this up. But we'll, we'll try to advance it to the building commissioner at our earliest possible opportunity.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much for everyone's time and for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, now we're going to move on to our public hearing on accessory dwelling units. And we're going to kick this off with an explanation by Kathleen of what we are proposing. And Kathleen has a PowerPoint instead of a slide deck to just zip through. Do you have ability to share screen, Kathleen?
I'm disabled at the moment, so if somebody could make me able to do that, I will.
Am I able to do that? I don't know if I know how. Or is that Milton Access TV to do?
What would you like me to do?
Can you? Yeah, to share screen.
Apologies, that thing always resets itself.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you so much.
There you go. Everyone's good.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. I'm trying to get, oh, there we go. So for those of you who, like Denny, who had to sit in and April, who had to sit on the warrant committee, these are the same slides. So this is a PowerPoint that I put together to explain about the fact that we have this accessory dwelling unit by law that we are proposing. It would replace the temporary apartment by law that we have at the present time. And as I mentioned in the staff, staff report at the beginning of the meeting, there were many, Tim can corroborate this, questions and proposals for accessory dwelling units discussed at yesterday's session with the Mass Municipal Association's lawyers panel. So it seems to be a pretty popular item these days. I do want to, Tim had sort of put together a list of the cities and towns that have already adopted the amended accessory dwelling unit bylaws. And I would point out that both Lincoln and Carlisle are ones that, that actually I was instrumental with working with those towns to draft. There's been some concern expressed about the fact that we would have hundreds and thousands of these units throughout town. And Tim very helpfully put in this number that the average number of accessory dwelling units that have been approved annually had been two-point-five. And in Milton, our temporary apartment by law has been probably used five times maybe in the last five years. So it's not something that we expect to be, you know, breaking out all over town. Housing choice bill that said, that just was passed and is now effective does encourage the development of accessory dwelling units. And it reduces the quantum of vote required at a town meeting from two-thirds to a majority. But that's only for these provisions that would allow accessory dwelling units within a home or detached structures as by right or accessory dwelling units in a detached, separate structure by special permit. Many of the towns that have recently adopted accessory dwelling unit bylaws have kind of split fifty-fifty about whether they want to have it by special permit or by right. I think that we've discussed this and given the age of the housing in, in Milton, it seems more appropriate that we would require a special permit for either a unit in your home or a detached structure. So our bylaw would be going forward at town meeting with a two-thirds vote required. So the accessory dwelling units, there are three types. Interior, one which is inside the existing part of the dwelling, which right now is the only type that we allow. You cannot do an addition to your dwelling and for an accessory unit. You can't do any kind of alterations on the outside for an accessory apartment in, in our current bylaw. Interior ones with modifications to the outside of the dwelling to accommodate a separate unit, something like over the garage. It requires a variance in, in our town in addition to a special permit. So you have to apply for two things. Detached, separate unit but smaller than the existing dwelling. Example would be over a detached garage is currently prohibited in this town. So the comparison we did was between what we have with temporary apartment and the accessory dwelling unit. They are both going to be, they're both issued by special permits issued by the Board of Appeals. The temporary apartment is what we currently have and the accessory dwelling unit is what we are proposing. So the applicant in a temporary apartment has to own at least fifty percent interest of either the principal dwelling or the, or the apartment as a primary residence. Ownership as a trustee of a trust is, you know, as people get older, they tend to like to use these estate planning trusts and those kinds of things. That's not allowed. In this proposal, the applicant would be the same. They'd have to be the owner of at least fifty percent. But they could either have direct outright ownership or all beneficial interest and occupying in either the principal dwelling or the ADU as their primary residence. So we haven't changed that requirement. Residents, right now, we require your special permit to name all the tenants, which includes all of your children. And, and that gets recorded at the registry of deeds. So if the owner lives in the temporary apartment, then it have to list everybody that's in the principal dwelling. So if mom moves into the unit by the garage, you have to name all you, everybody that's in the house. You, your wife, your children all go into the registry of deeds. All the tenants have to have a familial relationship with the owner. You can add newborns, newly adopted, as well as you can use a nurse or a caregiver. But if you decide to get married again, you have to get your permit amended. Right now, so that's the current situation. Under the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, no list of occupants in the special permit other than the owner applicant. The idea of putting your kids' names in the registry of deeds is just insane to me. No requirement for a family relationship. So you could have this, you know, structure, you know, the unit above the garage or whatever. You could in fact have somebody else live in it, not a family member. And then the owner is required to provide the building commissioner with an affidavit every five years saying that the owner occupancy hasn't changed. Plans. So when you go before the Board of Appeals, right now, you have to, you have to show a plan that shows where the temporary apartment is being built. And it has to be in the existing dwelling. So if it isn't, you have to go to the Board of Appeals, not only for the special permit, but a variance as well. You can't make any exterior modifications except as required for health or safety. Any new interest must be in the rear or on the side. Stairways have to be enclosed and the whole thing has to still look like a single-family dwelling. So under the accessory dwelling units, we would allow you to add on to your existing building or construct an accessory building in the backyard. Utilities, we would have to be underground, lighting dark sky compliant. And you would still want the entire thing, the house and whatever structure that you're going to add, still would have to look like a single-family property, not, you know, an apartment building. The plans that get submitted with this temporary apartment have to show how the temporary apartment goes back into the principal dwelling when the special permit ends. You have to show how the kitchen will be removed and the space reused. In the accessory dwelling unit, you're not required to tear out the kitchen on the sale of the dwelling. Because what we're trying to say, I mean, it just seems silly to sort of say, well, I have this house with this in-law apartment. But if I sell it to you, I have to rip out the in-law apartment. And then you can apply to the Board of Appeals to put it back in. I mean, that's just, that's how it's organized now. It doesn't really make much sense. Size. Adequate is what it says, no larger than eight hundred square feet or thirty-three percent of the floor area dwelling, whichever is less. It must be contained entirely within the existing dwelling or on the second floor of an attached garage. I don't know why it can't be in replacement of the, of the garage on the first floor, but it can't. And it can't have any more than two bedrooms. Our, the new proposal would be no less than five hundred square feet and no larger than nine hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the combined floor area of all the dwellings. The building inspector had recommended that, that nine hundred square feet be bumped up to twelve hundred square feet. And he was also wondering why we would require, we wouldn't allow something smaller than five hundred square feet. But, you know, that's for the discussion of the board.
Kathleen, can, Kathleen, can I, can I ask a question real quick? Just, and, and this is, Kathleen and I were both on the same webinar yesterday about housing choice. Are, are these dimensions consistent with the new state definition of ADU? I think five hundred square feet, nine hundred square feet and twenty-five percent ring a bell to me. But that was one of the, that was one of the things that got changed in the legislation. They actually defined ADU.
Yeah, I could check the materials from, from that. But yeah, I think the definition of accessory dwelling units might be different. I mean, the idea we would have is that we want to make sure it's accessory. I mean, when you say they can go up to twelve hundred square feet, I mean, seriously, that's like a house, another house. And I, I don't think that.
Yeah. And, and, and I think being consistent with the state definition is like, I, I think is a little less relevant in our case just because I don't think we're availing ourselves of the simple majority. So it kind of doesn't matter if we define ADU the same way.
Right.
I didn't mean to derail you there, just.
No, but yeah, so I'm just trying to look that up while we were talking, but I can't find it. And then the parking, right now, it says you can have, you know, five spaces in total. The parking is to be screened from the butters. Right now, we're saying that we just need to have one off-street parking space for the ADU. And we're not talking about how many parking spaces you have for the main house. The parking has to be paved or gravel. We put that in because there are instances of people having extra cars parking them on the lawn. And that people are, we don't want to encourage that kind of thing. And screening can be required if we deemed it necessary. I mean, I don't know whether you would, why you need to have a requirement for screening if it's not, you know, wherever the placement is. You know, I don't know why you would need it if, unless the board felt you needed it and then the butter felt you needed it. No borders or lodgers in either the temporary apartment or principal dwelling. No additional exterior modifications to your dwelling during the term of the special permit. So right now, if you have a temporary apartment and you want to put a dormer to allow for, you know, more headroom in your bathroom on the third floor, you can't do it. You can't make any exterior modifications to the building while you have a temporary apartment. We left that out. I don't see any reason why somebody couldn't go back to the Board of Appeals for something. Just because they have a temporary, they have an accessory dwelling, you shouldn't limit that. We are saying no short-term rentals, no Airbnbs. Termination. Right now, if you sell the house, you have to pull the apartment out. If you married somebody who wasn't named in the special permit, you have to take the apartment out. If you fail to occupy the dwelling as least fifty percent of it as your primary residence, you have to pull the kitchen out. Any violation not cured in two weeks and any, and they all end in four years.
I have a question there. I'm sorry. I, I had a question there. You said they have to pull the kitchen out. Is it the case that the enforcement officer could say, you need to pull the stove out? I mean, does, does Joe Prondak in fact ask everyone who goes through any of these things to pull out the kitchen? Does that happen?
Well, whether or not there's enforcement of this currently, I don't know. I mean, I, the only, when I called Beverly Sutton and asked, she's the secretary to the building department in special services, I asked what enforcement actions had taken place. And all she could tell me was that what has happened is that people have forgotten that the special permit expired in four years. And then they have to come back in and reapply after the permit has expired, which requires a whole new application for a variance. So she didn't say to me that they'd had any enforcement. So of course Beverly's not only, has only been there for maybe three or four years. But she hadn't said to me whether there had been any other kind of enforcement actions.
But I, I only ask because I know that other towns will say that, you know, you have to pull the stove out or the oven out. And um I, I just wanted to understand if our enforcement officer is actually doing it or or that gives him the power to enforce it, having that threat or that, you know, like if you don't follow.
You do have to take it out. If you do have to take it out, if you get caught, you know, having this, you know, apartment where you're not entitled to have it anymore because the person died or isn't on, isn't there anymore. Um the, the kitchen has to, kitchen has to be taken out. It's not just the stove. And the apartment has to be reincorporated into the house. So if you had some sort of, you know, door, um some kind of, you know, division, separate entry, all that sorts. That all has to come out. And if you don't do it, you lose the, you lose your occupancy certificate not only for the temporary apartment, but you lose it for the entire house. And that's the, you know, that's the way our bylaw reads. So, so as I said, if, if you, if you sell it, the house, if you sell it right now, um you know, you, you have to, you have to take that all out. So right now, that's the situation. But if this new bylaw, you could, you still have to take it out if you're, if nobody's gonna be living there, it's not a primary residence. But if you are gonna keep it and you are gonna move your mom into the apartment, you can provide an affidavit saying, I understand there's a special permit. I understand the terms and conditions. I will be occupying it and here's the person who's gonna be occupying the apartment. Um and so you can file that affidavit and then you don't have to take out the kitchen. Um it would also terminate still if, if it seems to be the principal dwelling unit. So everybody decides to move to Florida and rent it out, that accessory dwelling unit has to be terminated. Any violation that's not cured in two weeks. And then if you don't file this affidavit that you're still owner occupants, um every five years, it would also terminate. Um enforcement, uh right now, you know, you have to take the apartment out within sixty days. Um um and if you don't do it, you terminate the certificate of occupancy for the entire dwelling. So everybody's, you know, sleeping in the car, as I said the other day. Um right now, and so that's the way situation is now. And under the new one, it would be fines that you impose like any other zoning violation. And I think that's it.
Okay, very much. Just want to um offer my same comment from the warrant committee as well. The accessory dwelling um units by law is something that's been recommended to the town consistently in every one of our housing production plans and um dating back to the executive order four eighteen plan back in two thousand and four. There was a requirement of all um cities and towns under Governor Romney to create a community development plan. And that's when this first arose. So it's something that's been recommended to us for quite some time. Um I think the best thing to do at this point, unless Tim or Allison or Julia have anything to add, is to open it up to public comment.
Yeah. A- April, I just wanted to chime in um with just two really quick things. Um and 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 thank you for, you know, I I've looked at those previous housing production plans as well. Um a- as well as, you know, just in in the recent past since two thousand and fourteen, there's been a couple, um a couple of different goes at um at ADUs. So um it's something that, you know, the the board has been, you know, wrestling with for quite some time. I I'm just gonna share my screen just really quick, um a couple of things, just to set some, some additional context for um for accessory dwelling units. Um you know, this was, if you're a subscriber like me, you may have seen um in The Times a few weeks ago. This was back, this was, you know, February seventh, very recently. Um you know, housing parents in a pandemic, how about the backyard? Um you know, th- this isn't, you know, the exclusive kind of use of of ADUs. Um ADUs are are, you know, used for all sorts of different things. Um yeah, not, well, not all sorts, they're all housing units, but um, you know, different people live in them. But it really is something that um a lot of towns are 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 finding a lot of success with, you know, encouraging intergenerational living and really is an alternative to, um you know, other types of of care facilities um to keep older folks, you know, close to home, um you know, a- as a sort of, you know, semi-independent living situation. Um you know, the, I think the dual kind of crises of, um you know, the pandemic and, you know, our, you know, increasing aging population have really brought to the fore that, um, you know, people want to to be close to their families um and and to be able to keep an eye on people that they care about. Um and so I think a lot of towns are are finding this to be um a really um useful and and successful thing. Um you know, the other thing kind of related to that is, um, you know, the AARP is like super like gangbusters on accessory dwelling units and and they have been for quite some time. Uh you know, for that very reason, they they see it as a means of, you know, maintaining independence, um you know, as 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 a senior, um having a smaller living space, um downsizing from um not just a a too big of a house that maybe you either can't afford or or just don't feel like maintaining anymore, but really from a um uh a kind of healthy, you know, environmental gerontology kind of standpoint. Um these are often single-floor living situations. Um you know, you're not in a situation, you know, if it's new construction, which I think a lot of these accessory dwelling units, if not all of them, would be, um you know, there's the opportunity to um include universal design principles um so that folks that have a little bit of a, more of a hard time kind of getting around um ca- can find them easy to live in. So, you know, AARP actually has um a model state act and local ordinance that they they recommend. And and just one thing that I'll note, um you know, is that, you know, there's, there's no obligation, obviously, to listen to to what AARP says. Um but I I think a lot of people do on this issue. And and, you know, there's a lot of things that actually are probably more restrictive in our proposal than even, you know, what they consider to be the best practice. So I think, um you know, not, I'm not saying, you know, we need to change our proposal right now because I do think it's a good one. But I think, um you know, just to sort of address concerns that people may have, you know, there are other towns that are finding, you know, a lot of success um and and, you know, really minimal impacts with um with more liberal um uh accessory dwelling unit bylaws. So I'm gonna stop my screen share right now. I just wanted to, again, kind of set that more kind of broad context for, um you know, the state of affairs in in ADUs.
Great, thank you. Go back to the question you had before about the accessory dwelling unit in the, in the um revisions to chapter forty A. Um it's nine hundred square feet or one-half the floor area of the building is what they said. So nine hundred, whichever is small. Um and um and you can have additional restrictions like, you know, owner occupancy, prohibit, you know, prohibit short-term rentals, that sort of thing. But yeah, that's the size that they were talking about.
Thank you. Okay. Unless anybody else on the board has anything to add, I think we should open it for public comment. And again, this is our second public hearing on this zoning amendment. Um for anyone who might be confused, we did hear um from the public on this once, but then we made a change that was determined to be material. Um and we had to come back for a second public hearing. But this is expected, if we advance it tonight, to be on the May town meeting warrant. So please raise your hand if you would like to address the board on the issue. And we'll take folks as they come. This is like the lowest attendance meeting we've had in a long time. Eight attendees, other than the panelists, surprised. See our friend Alex Whiteside. Hey, Alex. You just have to unmute.
All right.
There you go. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
Oh great, welcome to the meeting. Thank you for your patience and it's been a long wait.
Well, it's uh, that's the way things go. Just one thing about removing the kitchen. That would be in uh section D of the existing statute. And it says that what you're supposed to do when you apply is show a design as to what you will do when it terminates, including removal of the kitchen, if that's what you plan to do. But there is no requirement in the current bylaw that the kitchen has to be removed. Basically, removing the stove will do it. Uh because once you remove the stove, you've got what's known as a guest bar. And refrigerator, there's no stove. It's the, that, that, the stove is sort of critical to what an apartment is. If you don't have a stove, you've probably got guest quarters. Uh now, I have sent you a email which is four pages long, four pages long. Um but I do have a fifth page with my signature on it. And I'm going to um quickly run through it. Uh raising the points that I make. And if you, if you want to uh read it, that would be great. Uh, all right. Initially, I say that accessory dwelling units are units which are accessory to a dwelling. There's no magic formula for what constitutes an accessory dwelling unit. What we've got now, the uh of um the accessory apartment, that is an accessory dwelling unit bylaw. There could be many other different kinds of accessory dwelling unit bylaws. You have proposed one possibility, but it is by far not the only possibility which could be used. In our housing production plan, it says that the current accessory apartment bylaw should be amended. And Kathleen went through a lot of things that are in it. And a lot of those things actually could very well be amended and you would have a better bylaw. And that's why the housing production plan suggested that what we've got be amended. It didn't say that what we've got is just no good, throw it out and start over again. But that's what's happened. Nothing in the current bylaw has been retained. Uh and that's a mistake. You, well, we have now is a bylaw, it's basically an in-law apartment bylaw. It says that you can have an apartment if you put people related to you into it. It's an in-law apartment bylaw. This takes out the need for any relationship. And it is just a bylaw for everyone who is an owner occupant to have a accessory apartment. And they can rent it to whomever they want to. Um for instance, uh someone living near current could create an apartment and rent it to students. Um no requirement for any relationship at all. It could be simply uh a unit to uh create some additional income. And it would be quite a lot of income because there's no requirement that any of these uh new apartments need to be affordable. There's no limit on the amount of rent you can charge. It's uh um completely contrary to our push to create affordable housing. And when I say that, um I say it because these new apartments are housing units. And as housing units, they will count on our total number of housing units in Milton. And that when it comes to determining whether or not we've got ten percent affordable, ten percent of these new apartments, or there will be a requirement that a number of affordable apartments equal to ten percent of these uh new apartments uh qualify. In other words, we're creating units, none of them have to be affordable. We've got to make ten percent, a number of equal to ten percent affordable somewhere else. It's just, we're asking to create more affordable units without making any provision for doing so. Uh and that's a huge mistake. Uh as I pointed out in my memo, we've got more than seven thousand owner occupied houses in Milton. Each one of them would be, each of these owner occupants would be entitled to apply for an accessory apartment. It's just that it's made that only three people, three people a year out of the seventy-four hundred people would want to have one of these accessory apartments that they could rent to whomever they want to share. I would suggest that that is ridiculous. There's going to be hundreds of these things and that's my experience. But wh- what I say in my, my email is that let's have a real study as to how many units this is likely to produce. I would suggest to you that that study may well determine that hundreds and perhaps thousands of new units are possible. And if that's the case, maybe there needs to be some additional study as to what sort of services, what sort of infrastructure, what will be required to service all these new units. Simply saying there are only going to be three units a year produced under this bylaw is, I think, on its, on its face, uh ridiculous. Um so I do think that there needs to be a study. You've got this study, what are you going to do? What's going to be the consequences of this action that you're proposing? There's been no study. There's been no determination of what the needs the town will have. I mean, you're gonna have inspections of these units, depending on how many there are. Uh you, you, with children, there are going to be additional children who have to be educated. It, if you've got a lot of these units, you're gonna have a lot of demand. And we should know what these demands are before, before we adopt zoning that we don't know the consequences of. Uh when this proposes that if you have an accessory building like a garage, you can put your accessory apartment in the garage. And uh um and then of course rent it to whomever you please. Uh in some of the denser neighborhoods such as East Milton, where you have your single-family house and you have your garage in back of it, right near the lot line. The garage is where these accessory apartments are going to be. And they're going to be right on top of the neighbor, right on top of the neighbor. And this is, is, is just bound to cause problems. It's bound to cause problems, but the citing requirement simply says that you need to, only need to have space. You only need to have enough space to put this temporary apartment in. And you know, maybe you have space to put it in, but if it is going to adversely affect the quality of life of the neighbor, then it shouldn't go in, but there's nothing to prevent this here. Uh taking out, as I say, you've uh, this used to be uh um an in-law apartment by law. Now it's just a general residency by law. You know, everyone gets to create an apartment who wants an apartment. Uh and can charge whatever kind of rent they want. I think that the idea, I think they should be in-law apartments. I, I just don't understand why we have to double the density of the town. It's already a dense town. Doubling the density or perhaps only increasing it by a Doubling the density, or perhaps only increasing it by a third, maybe less, but maybe not, is, I think, a mistake. I think Milton, people like Milton, not because it hasn't squeezed as much possible housing as possible out of, um, out of its, its area. And, and this of course is, is designed to just make the most dense areas even denser. It doesn't make sense. I'm on number three in my email. The existing zoning says that a special permit can last for four years and then it can be renewed if, if there hasn't been any problem. What's proposed is that you're going to make a special permit which potentially could last forever without any ability to make any changes in it. So long as it's an owner occupant, you're stuck with it. What we've done now is that after four years, if what you've put in isn't working, the special permit doesn't have to be renewed. This provision is useful because tenants in the temporary apartment know that if they run them up during the first four-year term, they're not going to get renewed. It is an incentive for good behavior. And it's simply removed for, basically, uh, uh, forever. A forever special permit without any effective provision in it to keep the tenants in line. Number four. In what we've got currently, the building inspector, there's a procedure. There's a procedure made which enables the building inspector, when there is complaint about what's going on in a temporary apartment, he can go to the Board of Appeals with information and schedule a hearing at which he gives the information to the Board of Appeals. And then the Board of Appeals requires that the owner occupant come back and show that there has been no problem. This is a critical, critical enforcement provision. And it is completely stricken, completely stricken from what is proposed. There's no enforcement at all. As, as mentioned in the PowerPoint, all you have is you can go to the district court and ask for a fine. And we know that the building inspector is loathe to go to the district court because it takes half a day. And the building inspector is, got plenty to do without having to go off to the district court to ask for a fine because tenants in the temporary apartment are misbehaving. What we've got now is an enforcement, a viable enforcement technique. And what we wouldn't have under what's proposed is no enforcement. Number five, it says, new parking needs to be screened from neighbors. It's pointed out that maybe the Board of Appeals, if the neighbor protests loud enough, would require that screening. But why not just require us? What's wrong with that provision? Why do you strike it? It's a good provision. Also saying that a temporary apartment can only have one car assigned to it is, is silly. If you've got a couple, an elderly couple who want to move downsized, but they each have a car, they should be able to have two cars. It's, it's just one car, a one car requirement is, there's no reason for it. And it's, it's, it's not, it's likely to become, it's likely to be unreasonable. There's a requirement, as you know, you can have three quarters of lodges in your house. But what we have now, our existing zoning says, look, if you want to have a temporary apartment in your house, you can't bring in quarters and lodges as well. You've got to make your choice. If you want quarters and lodges, fine. But if you want a temporary apartment, no quarters or lodges. This is actually a very good requirement. And it is stricken for, I don't know, maybe it's so that you can squeeze more people into these, uh, into these spaces, but it's not, uh, it's not Milton and it's not, it's not good. I, I conclude this section of my email by saying that what we've got, this existing bylaw, has a lot of good provisions in it, a lot of good provisions. It's got other provisions which you pointed out can use some work. Well, the way you amend things is you work on what needs work and you retain what's good. But here you've thrown everything out and retained none of it. And that is a mistake. Number seven is that the standards for the decision given to the Board of Appeals are inadequate. I've mentioned that, uh, the only standard is that it has to have adequate size and configuration to permit the increased use without adverse impact. It isn't the size of the lot that is the adverse impact. The adverse impact is the use, the use of the new apartment. Just about any lot, uh, you could find space to put a temporary apartment on. But the adverse impact is going to be from the youth. As I've pointed out, uh, controlling that youth is, measures to control that youth have been, don't appear in what is being proposed. And that is a big mistake. So all you have to do, you come in, say, I've got a big lot and I'm going to put an apartment in it. And that seems to be it, as long as it, you know, as, as long as the size of the lot will accommodate what you, what you want to put in it. That's not a good standard. There needs to be a standard by which the Board of Appeals can determine that the temporary apartment or accessory use, accessory dwelling, um, will not be any sort of detriment to the neighborhood in which it's introduced. And I would suggest that there would be, when you're talking about putting a temporary apartment into a garage five feet from the lot line and 10 feet, 15 feet from the neighbor, you're going to have a significant burden. And you need a good standard to make sure that what you're approving, and as I say, you're approving it forever. Because the special permit will go on forever as long as there is an owner occupant in the, on the premises. You need something better than what you've got, which is basically nothing. As, number eight, design requirements. What you say is that, uh, your buildings have to look like a single family house. A single family house, that's not a design requirement. At least it's not a good design requirement. You want it to look good. You want it to be a quality dwelling. You want the premises to be kept clean. You want them to be, you know, landscaped. You want a lot of things. You want this property to be a credit to the town. You can have, and there are, there are lots of crummy looking houses, some of which are pretty rundown. Nothing here says they have to be kept up. Nothing here says that they have to not look crummy. It simply says that what you end up with has to look something like a single family house, whatever that may be. I would suggest that you look at the Milton Village Design Standards and incorporate some of them here. Because why don't these buildings have to look as good as the buildings in Milton Village that require it to look? It's just not right. This affidavit that's filed every four years, I mean, it's fine to file an affidavit, but that doesn't do anything. I mean, the building inspector will receive it, put it into the file and that'll be it. There's no, you know, no one has to look into whether or not it's true. No one has to look into anything. They just have to file the affidavit. This affidavit may be false, but there's no penalty for a false affidavit. Can't revoke this special permit because that's not a reason. It's not given as a reason. We're getting to the end. The, I'd say that the zoning has to list the conditions under which the special permit will be issued. Simply saying the Board of Appeals, if it wants to, can impose conditions is not good enough because these permits can last forever. If you don't have the right conditions in the permit, when they're initially issued, you can't go back. I've suggested a number of things like, the apartment has to be maintained in a decent, safe and sanitary condition. You know, basic things like that to make sure that you're just not creating a, a nightmare. So it's quite what I, I, you know, some thought has to be put into that. Just saying the Board of Appeals will take care of us, especially, um, if you're wrong about there only being three units a year being applied for it. There are 50, 100, 200 units being applied for. To think that the Board of Appeals will have the time to individually craft thoughtful, detailed, comprehensive special permit is simply, it's, it's not warranted and it's likely to cause significant problems. The zoning should require the conditions that, the necessary conditions that need to be in the special permit. And there can be additional conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals. But at the very least, the basic conditions need to be specified because it's only if there's a violation of one of these conditions that the permit can be terminated. Other than the fact that if the owner occupant moves out or the property is sold. But as far as behavior is concerned, it's basically when one of the conditions of the special permit is not complied with, that will justify termination. And I've, okay. The number 11 of, as I say, it's, uh, we need enforcement, we need enforcement. There is no enforcement in what's provided. The building commissioner is limited to issuing a building permit and fifty of occupants thing. And then basically all that's required of them, or the Board of Appeals, is to receive this affidavit every four years. And they, nothing that needs to be done with it, other than file the warrant. Number 12, the Board of Appeals needs a role. It needs to be given a role in termination proceedings. These, these permits cannot just automatically expire. There needs to be a procedure. Someone has to go to the Board of Appeals and say, terminating, a event warranting termination has occurred. The Board of Appeals then has to schedule a hearing and determine whether or not a event warranting termination has occurred. Especially if it's one of these conditions of the special permit that is being relied on for its termination. The owner occupant may have different feelings about whether there has been such a terminating event different from the opinions of the neighbors. And the Board of Appeals needs to have a procedure in which it determines whether or not there has been a termination. Fourteen is, I'd say that 500 square feet is too small. And that if you get a lot of these 500 square foot, it's, it's fine for an in-law apartment. But as a general rental apartment, which it could be, it is simply too small. And filling up the town with a lot of 500 square foot apartments, and this is, would be, many people in East Milton would probably be limited to 500 square feet because of the 25% requirement. The 25% requirement says that you can, your apartment can only be 25% of the area of the house and apartment. And so you need at least 2,000 square feet to be able to do, uh, a 500 square foot apartment. But it's too small. It's too small and, and you don't want to, you don't want to make this the standard for Milton. Not a good standard for Milton. I, I think that, uh, what we've got now is 800 square feet and I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not sure that this isn't the right number. But once again, I, I do know that 500 square feet is the wrong number. So. Those are my comments. I've got a, you, you know, I've got some grammatical comments like the, there's some instances where neither is followed by or rather than nor, but, you know, I, I didn't, uh, I didn't do the grammatical one. I've got a few other comments, but, uh, in general, I think that there's no question that our current accessory apartment bylaw needs some work. And you pointed out areas in which it could be very much improved. But what you're suggesting also is, it's even more work. The stuff that, the good things in the current bylaw have to be restored. And the weaknesses of what you propose have to be addressed. As I say, a accessory dwelling unit bylaw, what you've proposed is not the only possibility. There are hundreds of possibilities and what you've proposed needs to be improved. And I do think that, uh, some real serious attention needs to be paid as to whether or not we want to create a general occupancy bylaw without any limitation on the, uh, what kind of tenants, like, what the sort of relationships the tenants need to have to the owner occupant. If it's open season for new apartments, let's make it a bylaw that's enforceable and touches all the bases because as I say, these special permits will last forever. You cut one crack at them and if you do it wrong, You cut one crack at them and if you do it wrong, you're stuck. You've heard about the tenants from hell. And tenants from hell are very difficult to get rid of. Uh, and we need to, uh, make it as clear as possible that they won't be tolerated in these new apartments. So thanks.
Thank you, Alex. Um, do we have anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Don't see any hands raised. Oh, Rick Neely. Okay, Rick, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, April. Thanks, members of the planning board. I've just, uh, I'll be a little shorter. And I just wanted to comment, I think, uh, the proposed amendment here is overly broad. Uh, I, it seems to me as you look at this thing that it would appear to overlay all of the existing residential districts, double A, A, B, and C by creating the possibility that every single house could possibly be a two-family house or a property. It's not clear in reading the article. In fact, the existing zoning would limit some of those single-family units. It's not clear from the article, for example, whether a property that does not meet the minimum square footage in each of those four zones that has been grandfathered, for example, whether those properties are eligible. So that's not clear to me. And it's not clear whether a property that is already in the setbacks and violates the setbacks, whether that property is eligible for the purposes of constructing this. And it's not clear. So I'm not sure whether seven thousand is the right number or what the right number is because it's not, you know, written enough so I can understand how many possible houses or units, single-family homes are eligible. But I think the reason it's overly broad is the fact that it overlays every single district and every single possibility appears to be, as I say, every single house could potentially be a two-family house. I think, uh, I don't believe the number of three apartments per year. I find that, I don't, it's hard to imagine that three units per year. That just is not comprehensible. That is the unit numbers that would be increased. I think if the units are much greater, you're going to have an impact on terms of the number of people added to the town in terms of schoolchildren and in terms of traffic. The traffic right now is already a real issue in the town. So I think that's an issue to look at, is safety and traffic. Um, the other final thing, of course, is I think Alex did raise this point. I'm not sure that it's clear that whether this bylaw would increase as legal units, the number of legal units in the town, whether this would increase the number of units required under the forty B bylaw. I think that's a valid issue. It seems to me you would need to have a legal opinion as to whether that is true, that it would increase the number of units required under forty B. So I think, uh, you know, if you, obviously if there's an amendment that's needed to the existing bylaw, I think it makes sense to do that. But I think this has gone from one extreme of being a very narrow bylaw, limited to families, to an overly broad bylaw that seems to impact the whole town, affecting every single, single-family property. And I think we need to answer those questions in terms of what properties are eligible and how many people really would be added. I just don't accept the three in. I don't think that number should be used. Thank, thanks very much.
Thank you, Rick. Um, anyone else like to speak tonight? If you would, please raise your hand. We have six other attendees that have not yet spoken. I don't see any hands raised. Give it another second. Okay. Mary Noble. It should be unmuted. If you could unmute yourself, please.
I think the aspect of affordability is something that could be also looked at more closely because if we're going to be increasing that many citizens and that many units of living, we're also having to deal with the fact that our proportions of affordability are going to be impacted.
Thank you. Good to hear from you. Miss seeing you.
I miss, I, I get to see you. I love it.
Hopefully we're not making any weird faces.
Well, that's okay.
Thank you. Okay, the pressure's on the last five attendees. Anybody else have anything to say before we close the public hearing? Okay, it doesn't look like that. So what I would suggest is that we, um, somebody make a motion to close the public hearing and we can begin the board's deliberations.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do you have a second? A second? Um, any discussion? No, then let's go through the roll call vote. Denny Swenson?
Oh, I wanted to talk about this.
Oh, no, we're just Oh, to close the meeting, yes, yes. Okay, I, I, I agree to close.
We're not stopping you.
That would have been a quick one.
I know.
Uh, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. And I just want to make a programming note. Charlotte Gaius had to sign off. She's, um, with a family member who she's assisting through some, um, medical challenges. So she had to leave for the evening. Um, okay, now we can start our deliberation. And if the board would oblige, I would like to go first. Is that okay? I typically fill the end. So I'm having sort of a strong reaction to some of the comments. Um, and I think, um, the basis of that is, well, I don't know how to start my comment. The first is the, the word extreme, um, was used. Yes, this, this bylaw would apply to every home in Milton. So Rick Neely asked that question. That is true. There's no limitation. If you are an existing home, um, that exists today, you would have the ability with a special permit issued by the Board of Appeals to add an accessory dwelling unit between five hundred and nine hundred square feet in your home. Um, the comment was that, one of the comments was that, you know, an accessory dwelling unit, you know, there could be thousands of them. What about all the kids that could be flooding in the school district? Which I don't believe there would be very many, if any, children in these units of five hundred to nine hundred square feet. That size of unit just doesn't attract a lot of children or create a lot of children in communities. And there's zillions, reams of evidence of that. Um, a contradictory comment was that five hundred square feet is too small and unlike Milton. Um, but I would like to remind the board that we just permitted units of that size at Ben's Cookie Factory. Um, and from what I understand, that's been a wildly successful project. So, you know, I, I don't know if that's consistent with our prior decisions. One thing that I'm having a very strong reaction to is a comment that we've heard not only tonight, but in other public hearings we've had that, you know, if we add rental units or condos in the community, we're just increasing the bottom line, which then creates more pressure for forty B. But I'm sitting here as folks are speaking and I'm just jotting down, in my time on the board, which is not quite five years yet. Um, my anniversary is next month. Um, we've created at least a hundred and twenty units of market rate housing, which produced between eight and ten affordable units by my count and by my memory. That's not including every project. But most of these units that we've created were over a million dollars. And I didn't hear a single person in any one of those hearings ever say we're creating a pressure on ourselves for forty B. I hear a lot of that when we're talking about creating certain types of units, including rental units. And I, I'm a little bit offended by the comment coming up now because I feel like that's a little bit of a bias against rental units or smaller units. Um, and the comment that these types of unit, units are not very Milton-like. I also take offense to renters. You know, unruly renters are hard to get rid of. Well, so are unruly, single-family homeowners. Um, and I don't like the tone of that comment. I find it offensive, frankly. Why don't we have greater design standards? It's because we're talking about existing homes. The design standards were considered when the homes were constructed, which could have been at any point. To suggest that now we need a separate set of design standards for somebody's house that they're already living in, I frankly think is a ridiculous statement. The idea that we are not writing in anything about, um, residential units having to be safe and sanitary, we don't need that because that's already a requirement for any one of our homes. If any home is unsafe or unsanitary, we're no longer allowed to occupy it. So to say that that has to be a different standard for a rental unit is, doesn't make sense. Um, being able to rent to whomever we want to, I, I think should be, a homeowner's right. I, I, you know, I'm, maybe I'm a little too free market in this regard. But to suggest that the town of Milton should be able to tell me who can live within the confines of my home in a permitted unit, I think is far too big brother. I don't, I, I don't think that's appropriate at all. Just because it's a relative shouldn't mean it's any different than anybody else. Um, just trying to go through the notes. And the, the volume of these special permits, two point five sounds low to me, too. I don't think that Tim made that up. I'm assuming that you got that from somewhere, Tim. But I also think the idea that every home in Milton or thousands of these units are going to be permitted overnight is, is crazy. That's not going to happen. Um, could there be a higher volume? Sure. Frankly, I would be in favor of making this an as-of-right bylaw. I think that, yes, this isn't solving our forty B problem necessarily. Although if a homeowner wishes to go through the fair housing, buy by the fair housing laws and do a lottery, they probably could get the unit added to the S H I account, but we're not requiring them to do so, but they could. Um, it, at the same time, though, these are not, I mean, these are definite, by definition, going to be more affordable than a single-family freestanding home, whether you rent or own it. And I want to remind everybody, which I've been saying at every single one of our hearings lately, is that in our housing correction plan, it says that there are a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-three existing Milton residents that are qualified as seniors and disabled people on the waitlist for a subsidized unit. And we have approximately two units that become available every year. So we have a demand for a more affordable type of housing, which is likely to be much smaller and not freestanding, that these residents that we have in our town today could take advantage of. And I think the idea that we're not going to allow those to be produced because we're afraid of an unruly renter, it is just an unsound argument. Um, and again, this isn't creating a two-family unit. I mean, there was a suggestion that this is going to allow two families all over the town. That is not true. The bylaw says it has to continue to appear to be a single-family unit. And by all accounts, it will be a single-family home with a small apartment, five hundred to nine hundred square feet. The reason why we need to file an affidavit isn't because it creates some new permission. It's so that the building commissioner knows the unit still exists. So that if there is a complaint or there is a problem, they know to look for it. Or if there's a fire, that the fire department would know it exists. So I mean, I think there is reason to have an affidavit, not, not for continual inspections. No one has continual inspections. We're homeowners, our homes are permitted. We're not getting inspections just because. Why would a rental unit have to have that? If there's a reason that it's not safe and sound, there's already mechanisms for the town to intervene. So to create a whole new one just for these small rental units because they're in someone's home as opposed to in a rental building, it doesn't make sense to me. So these are my comments. I think, I understand there's a resistance to change. I know that this is a different type of bylaw than we're used to seeing. But we created, as I started, a hundred and twenty-plus likely to be over a million dollar homes in the last five years. And not one single person said, wait a minute, what are we doing about our forty B count? So to only suggest this is an issue now, we're talking about a different type of home, I think is unfair. Those are my comments. I'd like for the rest of the board to please weigh in.
April, can I just chime in real quick just because it's, it's relevant to, to one of your comments? I just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of, um, factual, uh, background to, to, to what we're saying. I'm going to share my screen real quick just to kind of show you. Um, the, the statistic about the average of two point five approvals in a given year in greater Boston um, was not, and I don't think Kathleen or myself or anyone on the board made an assertion that there was any sort of prediction that there would be three approvals in a given year. So I, I, that's a little bit of a twisting of, of the words. Um, but let me share my screen real quick. Um, this is from a twenty eighteen report, um, by the Pioneer Institute, um, the state of zoning for accessory dwelling units, which is an analysis of, I think, uh, I, I, a hundred some odd towns in greater Boston. Um, Amy Dane was the author of that, a very highly respected analyst of, of housing in, in the Commonwealth. Um, and what she did was, um, surveyed, um, all the municipalities that she was studying for this report um, and asked their, uh, planners and, and building commissioners um, for statistics on three years' worth of permits issued for accessory dwelling units in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Um, and so, you know, you just, you know, going down this list, uh, Belmont, zero, one, and one permits. Um, Carlisle, eight, one, and one permits in those three years. Concord, five, two, and five. Uh, Franklin, five, five, five in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Uh, Hopkinton, one, three, and two. Ipswich, six, twelve, and five. Lexington, which has a by right bylaw, um, which is definitionally more permissive than ours. Three, five, and six. Uh, Lincoln, zero, two, and one. Medway, four, two, one. Melrose, two, two, one. Uh, Milton, incidentally, we responded not more than one a year under our current bylaw. Uh, Stoneham, six, five, and one. Swambska, what, zero, zero, and one. You know, I, I'm going through all of these numbers because I think when we talk about, you know, we need to do a study. You know, Milton is a special and unique town, but it's not more special and unique than Lexington, Lincoln, Littleton, Manchester, Marshfield, Maynard, Medfield, Medway, Melrose, Newton. You know, other towns are doing similar things and, and the study is i- is what is demonstrably happening in these other towns. And I think what you're seeing is that this is something that everyone's bylaw is a little bit different. Um, but in, in no municipality that has any kind of A D U bylaw of any sort of restriction, uh, are you seeing dozens, if not hundreds, if not thousands of permits applied for in a given year? And I think that speaks to, um, you know, the planning board is doing this, you know, because it's a, a portfolio approach to housing affordability. Um, you know, that this is one small piece of the picture of, of diversifying our housing stock. And, and April, you, you actually brought up a lot of the points that I, I was shining down in my notebook, but I just wanted to sort of just kind of clarify for everybody that, um, you know, that, that number is, you know, it's not something that's pulled out of the air. It's actually a, a rather rigorous survey of, of what towns are actually doing in the region.
Tim, can I ask a question? Um, on those, were they doing accessory dwelling bylaws that were open to family members or to the general public?
So it's, it's a mixed bag. Um, a- and I think I, I can send around this report. It's actually very interesting. Um, i- it really is, um, a mix. Some towns, you know, allow them by right of, you know, in a detached structure in the existing home. Some of them are more restrictive, only family members, only a certain size lot, only a certain size house. So, I mean, you, you would have to go one by one and kind of look at those individual bylaws. Um, but there really is a spectrum, you know, across the region of, you know, from quite restrictive to not very restrictive at all. Um, and I think that's why you see, um, you know, that kind of variation in those numbers. But I think if you look through that column, I think, you know, Bellingham had, you know, eighteen, you know, permits in twenty seventeen. Marshfield, I think, had, you know, they say they averaged fifteen a year, um, which is on the very, very high end. Um, so, you know, I, I, I think it's reasonable to assume that, you know, I, I'd be shocked if we got fifteen applications in a given year just looking at other similar towns with similar bylaws. Um, but even then, we're not talking about the hundreds or the, or thousands of applications.
So the way our housing inventory works, if we got fifteen or, you know, eighteen a year, would that mean we need to come up with two affordable units a year?
I, I mean, if you're, I mean, if, 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 if you're talking about keeping pace with, um, with our forty B obligations, I, I mean, that's just the math. Um, you know, one, one thing I'll say, and, and just again echoing April's, you know, comments, you know, we just, and by we, I mean you, uh, you know, just permitted a subdivision at two twenty-seven Pleasant Street. And, um, you know, those are five homes. And that's, that's five homes on the, on the, on the denominator of our year-round housing totals. Um, and there's no opportunity for affordability in there. That's just subdivision. You can do it. Um, you know, I think
And we couldn't say no either. I mean, they have a right to it and we can't say no. I mean, by law, right? I mean,
Right. And well, I mean, it's, it's, it's our zoning and it's our subdivision control regulations. So we are making an affirmative choice for that to be the case. Um, I, but, but I, I think, you know, one thing to keep Um, I, but, but I, I think, you know, one thing to keep in mind also, I mean, April mentioned, you know, if a homeowner wants to go through the process. One thing, it's not the most common thing in the universe, but Kathleen can, can, can possibly speak to this. Is, you know, there are affordable housing trusts that use their funds, whether it's from Community Preservation Act or, or other funds. Um, you know, that purchase accessory dwelling units and, and put deed restrictions on them. Um, you know, it's, it's not something that, you know, happens with a ton of frequency. Um, but it is something that's possible. Um, so that's, you know, i- it's, i- it's a possibility out there. But I think, you know, generally it's, I think the town needs to kind of figure out where it's standing on affordability. Because on one hand, you know, we're having a really intense discussion about, you know, what type of housing production increases the denominator. But we're also kind of really strenuously, you know, analyzing and reviewing and, and, and really picking apart. Projects that are actually trying to produce sizable amounts of affordable housing in, in these forty B projects. Um, you know, which is not to say that that's the wrong thing, thing to do, but, um, you know, i- it's the concern with affordability kind of needs to be a little more consistent.
Well, I, I just want to respond to that because I, I was, you know, really involved with a lot of the community hearings and so forth. With. Pulte project and with Carberry Walcott and a number of these other projects. And people were complaining that there wasn't an affordable, affordable count in that. So I, I did hear it come up a lot. And whenever we've done any big projects, people do tend to complain about affordability and that we're not getting there with affordable. So I've heard it consistently. I might be more sensitive to it because, you know, I, I was involved with the. You know, of the forty B Milton news years ago, so I'm very sensitive to it. And I, you know, we've all been like, come on, we're not getting anywhere with affordable and it's been an issue forever. So. Um, but I, I understand that April can be offended by that and I, I understand where she's coming from. But I also, from where I was sitting, I have heard people complaining on almost every project. That we're not getting anywhere on affordable. So it's been all sides, so.
Also talking about, we're talking about extremes, right? We're talking about massive forty Bs, you know, picking apart. So it's either lots of forty Bs or zero forty Bs and somehow we gotta find the middle ground here.
We're not even close. Seriously, adding, you know, five or ten accessory apartments. Is suddenly going to be, oh, my God, we're never going to reach our, we're not even, not even at six percent. We're like less than five.
I got a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I got a question. Um, maybe, Tim, I don't know, maybe you know, or someone else. Um, you mentioned about, um. You piggybacked on what April said about the affordable. They could get on that route. Is there anything in here that we could do? And again, this would probably be so in the weeds. That if you're already talking that it's only six apartments, maybe you're talking about one affordable that comes up. But just for, for argument's sake, is there anything we can do here to maybe. Um, give a Bennett, like a bonus or make something easier or a benefit to somebody that actually does make one of these affordable? Um, because, yeah, you're right. I mean, if it's tougher to do, somebody might not bother doing it. What they'll end up doing is just saying, hey. You know, aging grandparent or my kid, I'm just not going to charge you or I'm going to charge you fifty bucks a, a month. So guess what? It is affordable, but the town's never going to get credit. So is there anything we could do to get somebody to want to do it?
So I think. I can address that.
Yeah, go ahead, Kathleen.
Because in, when, in Lincoln and in Carlisle and in Situate. We had accessory dwelling by law that did allow for, for affordability. But it requires money because you are going to then buy a restriction on somebody's house. So the restriction to get on that subsized housing inventory, it has to be a, a restriction that counts for D H C D. So we looked at in Carlisle and we had Community Preservation Act money and a threat of forty Bs in Carlisle. And so what they, that town did is they said, okay, fine, we'll allow these accessory apartments. And we'll encourage them to be affordable by providing money. So in Carlisle, there's no town sewer. So you would provide CPA funds to have somebody upgrade their septic to have. Accept another unit, um, or upgrade, you know, and pay for some of the improvements, but it requires cash. And until this year, we didn't have CPA, so we didn't have any ability to do it. So the issue with the affordability problem is that, as you know, Rich, is that it has to be fair housing. So you have to be on a lottery, you have to take whatever tenant shows up. And most people, since this is an accessory dwelling in your house, you live there, you want to be able to make the choice. So I have to say that in the seven or eight years that we've had, we've had them, we haven't used them very often. But, you know, there's always the possibility for the housing trust, if it gets the funding, to go in and buy a restriction on somebody's house.
Is there? No, that, that's, I appreciate that. So, I mean, is there any benefit? And I'm not trying to say we should. Because we just talked about this in the last one. I'm not a fan of creating a law that we know is never going to be used. But is there any benefit for us to set something up like that to say that we are. You know, thinking about affordable and we're making it easier. You, you, you know what I'm going with that? Like, is, is there any Bennett for us?
Yeah, I think that's something to talk about with the housing trust and when the Community Preservation Committee gets established. They just voted that bylaw in on Monday night. So they appoint the committee. I think that's a place to talk about it and to say, okay, fine. Do we want to have, you know, some kind of program that, that helps, you know, for these conversions and providing.
Okay.
Funds for an affordable unit. But I, we can't, I don't, I don't like the idea of popping that in when I don't have buy-in from the C P C. Which doesn't even constitute it yet.
So it wouldn't be us. So it wouldn't be us. It would be us creating the law and then them attaching something to.
And then they would have the ability and then we could always amend it to add in some sort of accessory affordable unit program. But going to this issue of the, you know, the, of the affordability, I'd like to point out that what is not affordable in this town. Are real estate taxes. And the residential base in this town, you know, we pay the taxes for everything. Thirty-two million dollars for a new fires, three new fire stations got voted on Monday. This ability to create an accessory unit that is not occupied by a family member allows somebody like me. For example, um, to, well, not, I couldn't in this, in this property because there's no, there's no variance from the zoning's requirements. So you, you're still stuck with the existing zoning and setbacks and stuff like that. We don't waive any of that in here. It's, it's, if you can fit it on your lot without violating your setbacks and all that sort of thing, well, then fine. But we're not giving a license to pop something in the back of my five thousand square foot lot in East Milton. It won't, it won't, it won't be setback. But what it does provide for older citizens in this town who want to stay here and love it. It provides them the ability to sort of have an accessory unit if they have the space for it. And have somebody younger who's out there and shoveling the snow and helping to pay their real estate taxes. And so it allows people to stay in place. It also allows families, especially these days. Where you don't want to be popping your relative in a nursing home necessarily. I mean, it's just frightening. So you could provide, you know, accessory dwelling in a separate structure. I mean, right now you can't do that. It has to be in the existing building and you can't even do an addition. And, and if you have a garage that's too small for your car. Was many of us do, you know, many of us do in East Milton. There's no car that can fit into most of these garages. Is that you can't, you can only put your relative on the second floor. Well. Houses an elderly person want to go up and downstairs. Why couldn't you do it on the first floor? I mean, it's just craziness. And, and as I said, why does it always have to be a family member? Why? Why couldn't it be, you know, somebody like, you know, somebody wants to stay here and wants to have a little bit of, you know, comfort. And have a little bit of, you know, somebody there, keep an eye on them and help pay their real estate taxes. And so it's maybe not a unit that counts on forty B, but for God's sakes, we have people. You know, there was, when Navara tore down a house behind that restaurant to put in, you know, the extension for that, that, um. That restaurant, I had calls from a number of people looking to me to, did I know an apartment nearby? Because they had, they had a daughter who was living in, in the house that got torn down and there's nothing available. We don't have that kind of thing. You're making, you're making money, you're working as a waitress, you can't afford to be renting a house or an apartment that's available here in Milton. As April said, we got a hundred and how many people waiting for housing units and only get two a year? So affordability has a broader definition than saving yourself from a forty B application.
So Rich, I think, I think the answer to your question is that the bylaw as it's written right now wouldn't preclude someone. From including their unit on the S H I. They just have to create a lottery and have, you know, a stranger essentially would be moving in. And not everybody is going to be comfortable with that. Um, but they still could do it. And we could, we could come up with this agreement with the Milton Affordable Housing Trust. Or the CPA committee or someone else to buy down the deed restriction. So that's certainly something that could still happen.
Yeah, I, I would like, I mean, that sounds like a good idea to me in the future as even if. I mean, in my opinion, if we created this. And then you added that, even if you got one or two every once in a while. Um, I think it's, it's, does what I think we should be doing, adding lots of different ways of affordability. And so that, you know, over time, it's not just, hey, let's put a mega mall in here of, of, of units. Um, to check the box, but we've got dozens of avenues of affordability and this is just one of them. So, you know, I, I always hear people say, hey, that's not going to be the silver bullet, but if we're always looking for the silver bullet. You know, it's, it's, you know, that's not fair either. So I, I, I do think that we should think about that, talking to that group whenever it's established.
I agree.
Well, we get a planning board representative on the CPA.
Oh, do we have to appoint somebody at some point?
When the bylaw gets approved.
So Rich, any more comments about what you heard tonight or the bylaw?
No, I, I appreciate, Tim, did you, um, did you share that with us once before? I swear I saw something like that. Or maybe you've shown it to us or I looked for it or, I don't know.
Uh, the A D U report.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I might, I might have sent it along, but I can, I, I can do that again if you want. It's, it's. It's, it's, it's really interesting. Um, let me, I'll do that right now.
Yeah, and, and I have seen in, in, you know, when you were talking about it before, I did pull up. Um, some random things that I, that I Googled that showed different towns that did force, that must be. Um, a relative and others that did not. But I did see that there was a lot of towns that did not. And, you know, that, yeah, makes sense.
Um, Tim, since you mentioned Amy Dane and the Pioneer Institute, um, you just from, I used to work at the Pioneer Institute, full disclosure. Um, but the original study that you wrote for the Pioneer Institute was in two thousand and six when I was there. It's called Regulation and the Rise of Housing Prices in Greater Boston. A study based on new data from a hundred and eighty seven cities and towns in eastern Massachusetts. If you could find that link and circulate it to the board as well, there's a lot of really good information in there about. What types of decision-making increases and decreases affordability in communities. I think it's really relevant to future. Discussions of this board. Okay.
Proposal to, um, to, to think about which was addressing. Um, Alex's comment about the enforceability. Um, there was a provision in the prior version of this temporary apartment. Um, to set up a hearing with the Board of Appeals and, um. Um, and that language we might want to include in. Of, in the bylaw. And I just drafted that. But I can't find it on this, um, how did it screen share? But, um, so it would be adding, it would be taking from the temporary apartment, um, language. Um, what is currently in there, which says that if the board, if the building inspector has reason to. Think that there's some, um, you know, violation of any term, you know, that, um, it's not being complied with. He can schedule a hearing with the Board of Appeals for determination whether such event has occurred. And shall give notice of the time and place for the hearing to the assessed owners, et cetera, et cetera. At the hearing, the building commissioner or designee shall specify the basis of his belief that one of the events has occurred, providing whatever information. And then the holder has to, you know, convince the Board of Appeals that they haven't been a jerk. And the, um, Board of Appeals, you know, can either revoke it if they want to. So that language is in the temporary, um, apartment language. And so I proposed adding that to. The, um, proposed by law and I sent the language to Tim.
Jenny, did you have comments?
Um, yeah, um. I'm, I'm struggling with this one, um, but, um. I have a few minutes, but, you know, Kathleen mentioned at the warrant committee meeting that, you know, by the time we were done talking about the condo by law. The last public hearing, um, you know, the public didn't have much comment and I think. We can only expect so much because they were pretty, and we were pretty exhausted by the time we were done with the condos. So. Um, so it's no fault of anyone, but, but it's just how much can we, um, you know, how much thoughtful feedback can we get? But, um, Rick Neely, Alex Whiteside, Mary Noble, all tuned in and thank you for all of your comments and feedback. Um, and, and thank you, Alex. I think this is probably the third, maybe fourth. Memo that he sent on this, um, topic. I was a bit thrown because at first I, I thought from our last public hearing that the accessory dwelling units. Were not part of our housing count. And then I learned that they are part of our housing count. You know, I, I trust Tim's analysis, but I haven't had any time to read it or learn from it. I would like the time to do that. Because, you know, you're getting, I'm getting conflicting information and trying to sort it out. You know, I, I still don't really have a good sense. Is it three units a year? Is it two units a year? Is it eighteen units a year? Or is it, you know, if it's eighteen a year and we have to do that, do we need to come up with? Twenty or forty units of affordable? I just don't know. So I'm juggling all of these unknowns. Um, I'm glad to hear we're not up in hundreds or thousands. Um, but I do know it's been really hard for us as a town to come up with any affordables ever. Um, so I, I do like to have a plan and we don't really have a plan for that. So I'm just trying to. Um, get through this and then. You know. The, the town meeting expects our articles are fully vetted. And I have stated before that accessory dwelling units don't even come before our board. So I have not done any homework on this and I'm get, and I'm juggling all of, of these balls that I don't. You know, I don't know. I've got one lawyer, Kathleen, saying a lot of things. And I've got Alex from the public, very, very, very knowledgeable. On zoning, Rick Neely, I've always admired his comments on town meeting floor. He's saying another thing. So I'm sort of struggling and I'm, I'm just having a hard time. I think Alex makes a lot of really good points about, um, you know, the, the first bylaw. Um, that's in existence today, has a lot of really good things in it. And I hear him saying he doesn't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Um, and I do understand that we thought the goal was the housing production plan called for an amendment. To the old accessory dwelling unit. And I kind of took on what Rick Neely said, which was, you know, the first one was narrow. The second one that we're proposing now might be overly broad. I'm wondering if we can go back to the first one and make amendments. That make it easier for the applicant, easier for those who want to live in them, easier for enforcement. And maybe even easier for the zoning Board of Appeals. Taking in the good things from the first one, maybe incorporating some of the good things from Kathleen's newest one. Um, I'm just, I know that's a lot of work and I respect and appreciate that Kathleen has put a lot of work into this. But I'm just wondering, you know, we're talking about a zoning article, couldn't, could we just take a moment? And, and think, is this the best way to go or can we do better? We're, we're always trying to meet these deadlines to, to get something into the May warrant. But, but maybe if we, you know, incorporate some of these. you know, possible im- improvements. It sounded, you know, like good ideas, you know, on enforcement. I, I thought Alex made a lot of really good points on enforcement. You know, I, I, I'm just struggling here and, um, I, I would like to, I, I'd like more time for analysis to actually know exactly what, what it is. You know, exactly how many units we're, you know, we're aiming for, what our plan is to come up with the affordable units that we would need to balance that, which we should be doing with every project anyway. So I, I think, you know, I want to see progress, but I also just don't want to rush it for progress sake and then have, you know, I, I, you know, Alex said something, there's no extra exit strategy for the town as long as you have the same owner. So this, you know, you can move tenant in and it could be driving the neighbors crazy, but there, but there's no real strategy for the enforcement officer. And we have to give them as much power as we can to resolve issues. So I think I've been so distracted by the whole condo bylaw, responding to the public on that and, and dealing with all of that and trying to read all I could about that, that this, that this accessory dwelling got the short shrift of my attention. And I think the public was simply exhausted by the time this topic came around. So.
Can I ask a question about that, Danny? How is, how is a tenant driving the neighborhood crazy any different than somebody who purchases the ne- the house next door that you don't like or is driving everybody crazy?
Well, I mean, the only thing that I picked up on with Alex is that if, 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 if you change a garage that's 10 feet away from and a butter's property line, and that's, that's much closer. Usually houses are further apart, but now you're putting an accessory unit right up against, you know.
Living in my neighborhood.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I'm not that far. It's like, you know, seriously, it's 20 feet maybe at the most. I, you know, that the point about, you know, the tenants, um, you know, we, as April said, we don't control who buys the house next to you. And they could turn out to be having a bunch of barking dogs and, you know, teenagers that want to have a rock band in the garage and play, you know, all night long. I mean, there's any number of things and we don't control that. And the whole idea to say, well, just because you have a tenant, you have to have some ability in the permit to say they have to keep the place up and all that sort of stuff. It's just kind of, you don't tell an owner that they have to do that. Why would a tenant be treated worse?
Well, I think that's what kind of upset me is the tone. I mean, just because somebody is a renter doesn't mean they're any less responsible or they're any less of a good neighbor than a homeowner. So I think that's the, the crux of what really upset me when I was first hearing the comments because it seemed to be a bias against renters as if they're, you know, wholly irresponsible people and are going to be going crazy and hurting the neighborhood. And I just don't think that's right.
So in my, no, I, I hear you and I don't, I don't think that, that, that was, you know, I, I can't speak for Alex, but Alex or, but I, I, I would hope that's not what he intended, of course. I don't think, but aside from that, I actually had an in-law apartment. I, I had one built. I lived in the town of Hanover. And, and it was very, very strict. I, um, it couldn't become anything that could be rented beyond, um, beyond a relative for 10 years because they didn't want it to be quickly turning over. Like, so in other words, you had to be pretty committed to it. If you were going to do something for 10 years and you were committed to, you know, your family and this and that and da, da, da. And, um, so that, so, so I, I think towns, and I think, you know, I knew a family in Marshfield and they, um, they would have to take the stove out if things changed, if it was no longer in, in compliance. So I'm, I'm familiar with these things happening and I understand the process and the procedure. So, so, um, so I understand the benefits of making it a challenge as opposed to opening the floodgates too wide. You want to keep it kind of narrow. And if it's narrow, you can always open it more later. But if you just open it wide open, it's really difficult to narrow it later. But you know what I mean? So that's, that's, I think, I think that's, that was what I was picking up on as the, as the, um, as the logic is, is, um, start narrow, you know, and maybe inch your way wider. I'm all for improving the initial bylaw. I'm all for improving that. I, I'm, you, you're, I'm with you on that. I'm just struggling with, you know, I, I thought Alex made a lot of good points. And I'm wondering if there's room for improvement and if we're obligated to provide that improvement to the town meeting. Because when I used to go to town meeting before I was on the planning board, I had always assumed that the articles were fully vetted by the boards before they got there. And I, I, now that, I worry that we, 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 you know, we tried to make these deadlines over the holidays and I, I feel like sometimes things get rushed. And, and this, this I felt, you know, didn't get the attention that, that, you know, we, we spent four years, well, not the planning board didn't, but there was, um, Cheryl kept saying she had spent four years on the, um, overlay. So, um, I think that I think more time could be spent and I think it could be improved based on what I'm hearing.
So I guess my.
Well, I think it's just ironic that, you know, everybody wants us to do something about providing more housing and better housing and more housing diversity and all that sort of stuff in this town. And every time we take a step to try to do that, the, the answer always is, oh, well, let's do a study or let's think about it or let's, you know, you know, put it out to, put it out to pasture and, you know, I mean, and, and the number of times I've been at town meeting where, you know, the planning boards have come up with some bylaw and then they vote to send it back to the planning board. I mean, I hear you about the fact of, about the vetting and stuff, but, you know, I've been working on this bylaw for months.
It's, it's really, really hard to evict anybody in Massachusetts. And I'm not saying that as like,
But why is that? Why, I mean, seriously, if I want to rent my place to somebody and I have to take that risk, the planning board isn't in charge or the Board of Appeals isn't in charge of making sure that you're happy with your tenants. It's a choice.
Well, I'm just saying, I'd rather be careful at the beginning and, and try to avoid issues later. I think if we can button things up and spend a little bit of time on some improvements that it will serve everyone more in the future. And I'm not talking about, you know, maybe instead of May, do it in the fall and, 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 you know, I think a lot of people have asked, could we get, could, could, could we make it easier for them to be included on SHI? And I think that's something that we could do. I think we could improve the design guidelines. I think.
I don't see, I, I'll tell you right now, I've read Alex's memo and I appreciate the time and effort that he took. I really do. And I appreciate the input that Alex put into it and, and I appreciate his comments, but I'm not in favor of any of the amendments that he's proposed, other than the one I've suggested, which is carrying over the Board of Appeals hearing in case of an enforcement issue. But I'll tell you right now, I'm not putting in design standards. I'm, you know, you can go, you guys can decide what you want to do, but I'll tell you right now that I'm happy with the, the language that's in that bylaw now. And I'm not prepared to amend it the way Alex has suggested.
So I think that there's a difference between being fully vetted and having a difference of opinion. So I think that, um, maybe this is a perfect highlight of that Kathleen and Alex are not going to come to agreement on, on many of these issues. But I do want to remind the board, this is our second public hearing on this. And I know that the condo bylaw did, you know, take a lot of the air out of the room. But again, this is something that has been recommended to the town since 2004 and maybe pre- prior. In the time that I've been on the board, it's come up a couple of times, but no one's ever really taken the leadership to advance it or there wasn't really political will to advance it. I think that the difference between what we have now and what we're proposing, that the changes are relatively modest, frankly. I think the whole idea of an accessory dwelling unit bylaw is a very, very modest way to create new housing, a diversity of housing stock that doesn't exist in this town. You know, if you're thinking about impacts on neighborhoods and infrastructure and other things, carving a small unit out of an existing structure is about the least amount of impact that, that you can have as opposed to the opposite extreme, which is 100 unit 40Bs. Of course, there's plenty of running room in the middle and there's a thousand other strategies to consider. And I'm not suggesting that this is a solution for any of our problems, other than the fact that it does, it would help to create in homes where the homeowner wishes to, a diversity of housing stock that can meet the needs of certain members of our population that aren't met today. There is an affordability component. It's not accounted on SHI, most likely affordability component, although there are opportunities to explore that as Rich suggested earlier. My feeling is I would really like to see this go to town meeting and perhaps town meeting says no. I don't care if we, I mean, I do care, but if we get to town meeting and two thirds of the people reject it, then they reject it. But I think put something forward. I, I think just to keep saying that we don't have enough time or we haven't thought about it more. I mean, this is really a very low impact bylaw. When we think about the spectrum of opportunities of housing policy, it's really the, probably the lowest impact bylaw that we could propose.
April?
Yes, please, Rich.
Yeah, no, just, um, chiming in. So, yeah, I, I think a few, well, a few things there. I mean, I, I, I can appreciate, I think, all the comments that everybody's mentioning, um, mentioning Danny yours too. I mean, I, I hear all of it. I, 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 what, those way, I guess this is the way I'm looking at it. April, a few things that you said resonated with me and kind of where is the way I was looking at this before. I'm thinking about this as my own, myself, right? And so specifically, I guess, on some of the design guidelines, like that, I'll take that one just as a point. Like, if I wanted to, so I have a finished basement. And actually, you could probably easily put a kitchen in here and close it off and, and follow the guidelines and make it an apartment and, you know, maybe have my mother move in. I don't know. I probably would be pretty offended if I had to go through some design guidelines. I mean, as long as I was following building codes and following, you know, hiring contractors, doing what's right in building and if always I was doing it legally, I don't want anybody telling me it has to be a certain color or certain anything. Quite honestly, it's my house and it's my basement. I also, if I did build that, I started and started thinking about like, you know, the other thing, like, does it have to be a family member? I mean, I, I could imagine saying to somebody in need during this time, like a friend, hey, yeah, why don't you live in my basement for a year or two and see, you know what I mean? Like, I start thinking of those things and I don't know that we necessarily need to be that restrictive in our town. I was looking at some of those reports and a lot of towns don't have that restriction that it needs to be family. As far as the, the number, I think that's a guess. Like, yeah, not, I don't mean to say it as a guess, but there's a report there. And I feel like, you know, Tim sounds like he did some analysis on it and I trust that. And, you know, I'm, I'm glad he's sending it out to us because I'll probably, you know, thumb through it too. And I'm sure I'm not going to find anything that's going to raise an eyebrow because he knows probably more about this stuff than I do. I, I would imagine that if it's two, all the things that we saw was two, three, four, five, 18, I mean, that one sounded like it was Marshfield or something like that. I wonder if some people there aren't just building rental units because it's Marshfield and people like to be near the beach. Um, and it's probably pretty simple to build a rental unit near there. I don't know. So that's the way I'm looking at this. I, I love the idea that we're making this easier. I'm sure that a lot of people, like other folks have said before, are doing this stuff and not telling anybody. So, yeah, I mean, that's just the way I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it very personally for myself. I'm not building a unit. I don't have any plans for it. I don't even think I'd qualify for it. But, uh, yeah, that's my, my comments. I do think, sorry, I'll throw this into, I do think we did, you know, the, the open meeting tonight went rather quickly. There wasn't a lot of people that joined this call. And I do recall, and I, I thought the second one was because it was the thought that we needed to open it back up, right? And so I, I mean, that was put out there the proper way. And so this technically could have went on for days and days if enough people joined or enough people had comments. So it only ended quickly because there wasn't any, so.
I'm sure there'll be comments at town meeting and at the warrant committee.
Good point. Good, good point. I, I am, you know, we're not saying, I'm, my approval tonight doesn't say, hey, this becomes the law tomorrow. This is going to go in front of town meeting. So I, I'm excited for town meeting to talk about this.
And it needs a two thirds vote. So, you know, it's not a slam dunk.
Not at all.
So I think that's what, what I'm saying, Rich, too, is I just want town meeting to have the ability to actually vote on something sometimes. Especially with related to, relating to housing policy, which has been on the tip of everyone's tongue for months or the last year. While we've been inundated with 40Bs, a lot of people are talking about housing and a lot of people are asking, why isn't the planning board doing something about this? And we're never, if we never send anything to town meeting, they won't know we ever did.
Well, for that, I think it's probably a pretty good thing because, you know, for me, it'll be nice to sit there and listen to all, I'm sure there'll be a lot of comments. And it'd be nice to get a gauge on what this town is thinking.
Yeah. And I did look up on DHCD's website that it's the housing units, it's the total number of housing units year round in the census. So it's a US census that makes the determination if we ever finish the census. There was one supposed to be finished by the end of December, 2020. But it's the total number of units. So it would have some kind of negligible impact on our percentage.
I mean, if town meeting comes back and overwhelmingly has, you know, issues against, I mean, it's obviously going to weigh into decisions in the future, so.
Yeah, I'll have to go into witness protection plan and.
But I mean, to your earlier point, Rich, if people came out, a large amount of people came out to our hearings and said they didn't agree with this, we would be thinking twice about it, just like we did with condo bylaw. But we haven't heard that same type of objection to this. So why not bring it to town meeting and let them decide?
Yeah. And for what it's worth, Danny, I do, there was some comments that you made I do agree with. I think they'll be brought up at town meeting. I do. And I'm sure it's going to be talked, some of those are going to be talked out at length. I feel like, yeah.
All right. Well, I.
Once the warrant comes out, everybody will be talking about it. And so we'll have the opportunity to have.
Social media.
So this actually technically is already on the warrant. Because we voted after the last public hearing to move it forward. I guess the question before us now is, do we wish to make an amendment? Do we want to pull it? I don't want to pull it. I don't know what I'm, I think Danny probably does.
It's not that I want to pull it. I, I just, I just had time to do analysis. So. I would be happy to do a, a revote as to whether or not it should go to the warrant.
On the warrant and we already presented it to the warrant committee. So it can't really, I mean.
What was the public hearing for?
We had, this is our second.
Because we had made a change on the, um, square footage.
But don't we usually at the end of the public hearing process take the vote? I think we jump the guns and it's the warrant.
So, so just to sort of go back in, in the history of this, we had a public hearing on the four zoning articles, um, the two that were kind of consensus picks, the floodplain and the tree bylaw. Condo conversion took up a lot of that time. ADUs took up a little tiny bit of that time. In, in that process, there was, um, a change made, the original bylaw that we had, uh, put up in anticipation of the public hearing, maintained the family restriction on ADUs. And I think a decision was made to, to remove that, um, in the course of that public hearing. And I think there was some, um, some commentary that, you know, a, 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 a material change of that magnitude would necessitate an additional public hearing. So that's when we went and re-advertised and republicized and reopened a new public hearing for the bylaw that we're talking about now. In the intervening period, there was a warrant committee meeting or hearing, which, I don't know which, if, if there's a difference there, um, where all four of those are, or no, not all four of them, three of those articles were presented to the warrant committee by April and company. So April, you're a little bit more familiar with the process of how this would work from a town meeting perspective. So, April, you're a little bit more familiar with the process of how this would work from a town meeting perspective.
Yeah, so I mean, there's been plenty of times where we've sent articles, voted as a board, sent articles to the warrant committee that didn't even have a public hearing yet. So I don't think there's any requirement that we do that after the public hearing. Um. The. Articles were sent to the select board. The select board recommended them for the warrant. The vote now would be. Either to ask the select board to pull them from the warrant or to suggest that we make this amendment on enforcement. And bring that to the warrant committee so that it can be printed in the warrant with that enforcement um amendment.
And that's the language.
Oh, I I I just want to make sure we're like clear. Uh, which article? So is the article that we're talking about now was the one that was presented to the warrant committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So one one thing I'm grappling with is I I voted affirmatively for the article. Because I asked a number of questions, and one of the questions that I asked was. If the town accepted. You know, these accessory dwelling units. Would we, would they be part of that housing count? In other words, would we have to come up with ten percent affordable? Units elsewhere.
And I just answered that question.
You just answered it correctly tonight, but in the. Prior public meeting. You said, we don't need to come up with affordables. That it doesn't count toward the housing inventory. So based on that, and then I asked, how many units? How many units? Accessory dwelling units are we talking about? And. You know, you said one to five or something, you know, under five. Um. And I'm, you know, I'm hearing different numbers and I I don't have anything. I I don't have anything solid on that, so it's just making me really uncomfortable. Cause. I I I based my vote on a lot of information, but that was my biggest question. That was my deciding factor. And because it wasn't going to impact. The need to come up with affordable housing. I thought it was. Okay. And I I get that, but but now. I don't know how many affordable units we're going to have to come up with, and my biggest goal is to get out from under. You know. Overly aggressive. Forty B developers or overly aggressive developers in general that threaten forty B if you don't have enough affordable. And I don't know how many affordable units we're going to have to come up with. I. I I I appreciate Tim's analysis, but I haven't had time to read it. I haven't received it in hand. And. I I based my vote on misinformation that was given to me. In a public meeting.
So what I would say, Denny, is, I mean, I would offer to revoke it, but now we don't have Cheryl here, and I don't think it's fair to her to revoke it without. Here either. So I think what I would suggest is that you just let the record show. You no longer support. The article. And I can report that to the warrant committee if you. Wish. Um, if we make an amendment. This is assuming that Rich and Kathleen still want to proceed. I don't know, but. That's one way to, and then you you know, you're.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to say, absent, before you mentioned Cheryl, I was going to say that we should revoke it. Because D- Denny's right. I mean, if she wants to. Go on the record. That would make sense, but if Denny's good with what you just mentioned.
I mean, I think you have to let the, I think you have to let the select board know, and I think you have to let the town meeting know, because. It's fine.
Okay, so. Go ahead, Kathleen, sorry.
So as I said, um. The, what I would propose is that. We amend the proposed bylaw submitted to the warrant committee with this change of this one paragraph that's highlighted in yellow.
And this is identical to the temporary apartment language?
Exactly. Except that I were added he or she, instead of just having he as the building commissioner, I made it he or she, just in.
Here, here. Thank you. Is there anyone taking a minute to read this and discuss? So just to clarify, Kathleen, this is to give the Board of Appeals a role in revoking the permit?
Correct.
So does that need to be seconded? What, is that a motion?
Kathleen, this is a motion.
And we we were sure that this is in scope. I'm guessing it is, but I don't know.
Yes.
We'll double check with. Town council as well. So Kathleen, do you want to make this as a motion?
Oh, I would make a motion to amend the proposed bylaw by adding this provision on enforcement.
Any discussion? Okay, now let's do a roll call. Um, Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yeah.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Okay. Um. So with that, we don't need to do anything else on this.
No.
The uh last item on our, and we already closed the public hearing, right? Yes, okay. Um, the last item on our agenda is discussion of housing production strategies, but I think we've had our fill of that for the evening, so what I would suggest is that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call vote. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody that hung in. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good night.